And unmuting our video, or is that still on us?
I think it's still on us.
So Rachel, the moderator will be when and if we start doing public participation and open comment, the moderator is able to mute the people that call in for those matters, but cannot mute you guys.
Got it. I'm gonna try and keep my video unmuted most of the time then. Thanks.
So Junie, are you on? We're not quite ready, Chris. Thank you. So Junie is here, so. Hi, we're missing Adam, so I'm gonna go ahead and get started because we have a few orders of business that I think we can actually get to without him. So I guess first Lynette, do you want to call the roll?
Councilmember Brockett.
Present.
Friend.
Here.
Joseph. Nagel.
Present.
Swetlik. Wallach.
Present.
Weaver.
Here.
Yates.
Here.
Young.
Present.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Very good. Okay, the first thing I would like to do is let Mirabai make a short announcement. Mirabai, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, thanks, man. So for everyone, anyone who knew Heidi Leatherwood, who used to be our assistant city clerk, I spoke with her today and I just wanted to let you all know that she found out that she has stage two breast cancer. And so she's doing chemo and she's doing really well. She sent me a picture of herself without her hair and she's absolutely adorable, but she's just trying to navigate the cancer. So I'm actually going to be sending her a care package of crystals because that's what we do for our business. They have some good, you know, cancer helping properties and whatnot. So if anyone's interested in signing onto the card and whatnot, do just message me privately and I'll definitely include you. So, thank you, Mirabai. Yeah.
Okay, very good. So I think the next order of business is to, we'll do this in a moment. The other announcement is that we are actively working to provide for more remote public participation beginning on April 7. More information will be forthcoming in the weeks ahead on how individuals can sign up for both open comment and public hearing comment. This meeting and the others will be televised on Boulder Channel 8 as well as live streamed on boulderchannel8.com. So the next item is to approve the amended agenda. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? Oh, is there a second? I'm sorry. Second? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? If there's any opposed, speak up now. Okay, hearing done. The new agenda is approved. And so then I think that moves us into the board and commission appointments. So let me get here. And so I was gonna make a suggestion to us as far as how we do this. I think the most important boards for us to make absolutely sure that we have done are RAB, Open Space and Planning. So in the presentation that just came up, is what order, Chris, do we have for board and commissions? Any order set?
My understanding is you can take it in any order you'd like.
Awesome. So I'm gonna suggest that we start with RAB if we can do that. So if people want to pull up their notes on RAB, I think they're gonna have the most to say. And the reason I picked those three boards is because they are going to be speaking and having input into CU South. And so I think it's just really important that we make sure that they get. And so Mirabai has her hand raised. I'm just tracking the chat here. Okay. And Adam, it sounds like you've joined us? Adam Swetlik, can you hear me?
Yes, I'm here now.
Okay, very good. So we are going to do the RAB appointments now. Would anyone like to make a nomination? We have one resident to a five-year term. Nominations are open. Anyone? Mary?
Yes, I would like to nominate Gunner Paulson. I was impressed with his responses to the questions that we asked. I think one of the things that I really liked about his response is his grasp of where we are in terms of our negotiations with CU on CU South. And I think he really did that. So I was impressed with him and so I would support him.
Any other nominations for RAB?
Sam, Mark Wallach.
Yep, Mark.
I was also, I like Gunner Paulson very much. I also like John Bergeron. I thought he had a very good background in the issues that RAB is gonna face. But he had good priorities.
Okay, thank you, Mark. And then I have Bob Yates and then Aaron Brockett.
Mark, to the punch, I was also gonna nominate John Bergeron. I thought he, in addition to that, he's a water expert, especially on efficiency. He was an impressive interviewee. And I thought he took a very balanced approach. And he will go back to council, so I agree with Mark's nomination.
Great. Aaron, you're next. Agreed with Mark and Bob. Okay, very good. So Lynette, how are we gonna do this?
I'm gonna flip a coin and you're gonna have to trust me on whether it's heads or tails from whether we start at the top or bottom. So hold on. It's tails, so we'll start with Gunner Paulson.
Okay, so all in favor of Gunner Paulson, please text Gunner. I know that's a bit of a pain, but I think that's the way we're gonna have to do this. Okay, I have Mary for Gunner, Mirabai for Gunner, Adam for Gunner, Mary for Gunner. So I've got two Mirabais. So Mary for Gunner, Adam for Gunner, Mirabai for Gunner, and then there will be Sam for Gunner. So that is four. And is there anyone I didn't count for Gunner? And so I'm gonna take it then that there are five for John Bergeron.
John Bergeron, yes.
So I'm counting three. Junie is four. I'm waiting for a fifth for John Bergeron. Mark is John. Okay, very good. So John it is. I just want to say, as we say every year with RAB, we had a surfeit of riches here because there are so many people with so much incredible experience. We are done with these board RAB interviews and we're like, holy cow, we can't believe the technical expertise we have in Boulder. So thank you all for applying. And I'll say this this time and I won't repeat it each time, but if you did not get on this year, please reapply next year because we look kindly on people who show up more than once for this. Okay, so after that, I would like to do open space. We'll wait until the presentation catches up. Okay, there's our list. Bob Yates has a nomination.
I'd like to nominate Matt Benjamin. I'll speak to us kind of in a bit.
Great. And Mirabai has a nomination?
I would like to nominate Caroline Miller.
Great. Anyone else would like to make a nomination? Okay, very good. And I just want to make a comment to staff. This is about the most organized board and commission slideshow we've ever had. This tells us everything on cross tabs and stuff, so great. Okay, so this is for a five-year term. Bob, you made the nomination. Would you like to speak?
Sure. I think most people on council know Matt. He's been around for a while. He's served on various ad hoc committees, including our election committee. Matt is a scientist, which I think is very important. He actually used to run the planetarium at Fisk on CU campus. And I think on the open space board, it's important to have at least a handful of scientists because many of our decisions are science-based and around biology. You know, I was impressed by Matt's interview comment that he wants to engage in what he referred to as evidence-based stewardship. Stewardship, of course, is what open space is all about. And he wants to make his decisions based upon science and evidence. And I think Matt's a thinker and a clear speaker. And it's a substantial loss to us to lose Tom Isaacson, who's been on the open space board for five years and has been his chair. And I think we all really appreciate Tom's stewardship and leadership across the board and a very balanced person. And I can't think of a better person. We've got some great candidates, but I can't think of a better person than Matt Benjamin.
Okay, very good. And then next, let's have Mirabai speak to Caroline. And then what we'll do is have people just text that they want to speak after that. So the way this normally goes is we have nominations and then we close nominations. We effectively did that. We speak to each, the person nominated speaks to each candidate and then we just raise hands and go around. Rachel has a question. If we have particular concerns about candidate as opposed to nomination, when we say that, you would just say it when you speak about the candidates. So Mirabai, take it away on Caroline.
Actually, Sam, I just texted you. I wasn't at the interview and I forgot we were speaking to them, but you and Mary were at there. So if one of you would like to speak to her more, I just know that I think it'd be great to have another woman on the board who seems like she has a strong independent mind, who's a little bit newer to our community and may have some interesting thoughts and perspectives that others who have been in the community a long time may not have. Also, being a single mother, she may have some good input for recreation for children and how to integrate education on the childhood side. So if you guys want to add anything, I'd be more than happy to open the floor.
Great. And then Rachel, you'd ask a question, which I repeated. Would you like to speak?
Yeah, so I just wanted to express some concern. I met with Caroline and thought she was, it seemed like she would be very good for a board and I was impressed with her. But she had asked me about CU South and her understanding was that it was an issue of recreation versus conservation. And I think right now, we really need somebody, and you said we're doing these three boards because CU South is at such a critical juncture. I think we need somebody who can hit the ground running on that project. So I would think she might be better to apply next year. Thanks.
Mary? Mary Young?
Sorry, I had not unmuted my mic. So I met with Caroline and I was very impressed with the amount of effort she put into simply applying and to the interview. She came to our meeting with the charter, with the open space master plan. She had spoken to community members and staff members to understand what the open space board does. I also was very impressed with her application, especially the way she, I think she would make decisions. She is not affiliated with any kind of a camp, if you will, totally nonpartisan. I also think that this board needs gender balance. And I think Carolyn would be a great choice. And I think that she would, to address Rachel's concern, she would come up to speed on her understanding there. And, you know, just as Junie has proven to be such an amazing council member, I think that Caroline, having been here for about the same amount of time, would prove to be an amazing open space trustee.
Thank you, Mary. So I have Aaron Brockett next and then Junie Joseph after that.
Thanks, Sam. Well, I just wanted to add to what Bob said about Matt Benjamin, that I did think that he had a show demonstrated a really deep knowledge of the issues that the open space board faces and had, I thought, very sensible opinions on those issues. So I thought there was a depth of knowledge and a sharp perspective in addition to those things that Bob raised about him. So I'll be supporting Matt. I think he'd be a fantastic addition to the board.
Junie?
Yes, thank you. And I just wanted to thank Mary for her kind words. And I wanted to ask a question. I appreciate what Mirabai mentioned about the gender balance. And I think, again, when we think of diversity, we're thinking a word that I knew, but I kind of learned recently, which is binary. So it's having both gender represented. So I wanted to know maybe from one of you, whoever knows what's the makeup of the board, how many men, how many women? And then I have a question for Rachel, because that's very concerning to me, although I do want gender balance. I wonder, because she mentioned something about conservation, because to me, open spaces, you know, it's a little bit of both, right? We want conservation, preservation, and also, you know, allow people to have the opportunity to enjoy open space without damaging the ecological system. So I wanted to know a little bit more by what Rachel meant. Is she someone who seems to be just so rigid and not thinking about it, but will she be someone who will, although she may have certain views, will she consider other views? So to me, that's what it is. Because I think sometimes we may, you know, we have our own perspective about the world, but are we willing to listen?
So Junie, I'll jump in first and answer the question about the current composition. There are four men on the board and one woman. Rachel?
Yep. Thanks for the question, Junie. It was just as applied to CU South. So the issue at CU South is not so much conservation versus recreation, although that is generally a divide that I would agree applies and a lens that I think that OSPT members look through. But as to CU South, it's a much more complicated issue and it doesn't so much come down to conservation, recreation. Thanks.
Sorry, next I have Adam and then Mark.
Yeah, I just wanted to say real quickly that I really appreciate both of these candidates that we're discussing right now. I might vote one way or the other, but I think both of them will serve, you know, really well and try to do their best as a trustee. So while the vote may go one way or another, I really appreciate both candidates a lot and I hope they apply again, whichever doesn't make it.
Okay, great. Hang on, my team's just went away. Okay, there we go. Mark Wallach.
I have to second what Adam just said. I think they're both very strong candidates. I spent some time with Matt. I think he's got a very strong background here, but I also think Caroline does as well. And in terms of this recreation versus conservation dichotomy, I think she straddles both lines. She is a climber, so she's an active recreationist on open space. And I think she will understand and appreciate those concerns as well as the concerns of preservation. And I thought she had a pretty strong discussion of the issues. So I don't think we're gonna go wrong no matter what we do here. I think the issue of diversity does have a role to play on this board. And for that, on that basis, I would probably lean towards Caroline.
Great. And I'll speak up here since there's no one else in the queue. I had a really good sit down with both Matt and Caroline. I agree that Matt has some very interesting perspectives and some deep background. I also felt like Caroline had done an incredible amount of homework. She understood actually quite a lot about CU South. I thought there were more subtleties that we discussed and that I think she learned some about. But I didn't think she had any particular perspective about CU South that I could discern, except that we needed to come up with a balance between making sure that we had environmental preservation there and making sure that we did flood protection. So I think on that basis, because of the gender balance issue and because I think these are two pretty balanced candidates, I'm probably gonna lean towards Caroline. Anyone else want to speak before we vote? Lynette, how do we do this?
You start at the top with Matt Benjamin.
Very good. All in favor of Matt Benjamin, please signify with the text. We've got Bob, Rachel, and Aaron. Anyone else? Okay. So Junie, you're voting for Matt. Is that correct? Junie, if you could just say yes. Yes, okay, great. Thank you. I'm assuming everyone else is gonna vote for Caroline because that's four for Matt. If anyone doesn't want to vote for Caroline, sorry, for Caroline of the five who have not yet voted, please speak up. Okay, in that case, Caroline Miller is appointed to the open space board of trustees. Okay, next, if we could tee up planning board, that would be great. Very good. Okay, this is for one resident member for a five-year term. Anyone have nominations? Okay, Bob Yates has a nomination.
I nominate Erin Bagnell.
Great. Anyone else have a nomination?
Yes, this is Mark. I nominate Lisa Smith.
Very good. Any other nominations? Okay, hearing done. Nominations are closed. Bob?
Thanks, Sam. I make a couple of observations. First of all, we've got some really great, really great candidates, including Lisa Smith, who Mark just nominated. So again, as with the last board, I don't think we can go wrong here. I make a couple of observations about Aaron. First of all, Aaron is an architect and has been for many years. And I would observe that we only have one architect on the seven-member planning board, and that's Brian Bowen, who's actually departing the board. And so this is, Aaron, I believe among the seven or eight candidates is the only one who is an architect. And I think it's important to have at least one design professional on the planning board. And so I think I could probably almost stop there and say, why would we not replace an architect with an architect? But I will go on because I want to repeat some of the same things that Mary just mentioned about Carolyn Miller. I think we do have a slight gender imbalance on the planning board and we could use a woman. In addition, Aaron's, just as with Carolyn Miller, as Mary just mentioned, is a young mom. I think that brings an interesting perspective to our planning and our long-term objectives. And just as with Carolyn Miller on the open space board, as far as I can ascertain, Aaron is not aligned. She doesn't seem to be active in any of our kind of quasi-political parties here in Boulder. He's an architect who seems to keep her head down and can design good buildings. And so for all those reasons, I think that Aaron's a pretty obvious choice.
Mark, would you like to speak?
Certainly. Lisa has a masters in urban and regional planning and public administration. So I think she certainly has an appropriate background for the post. And she worked for the city of Boulder from 2014 to 18. I thought she gave a fairly nuanced view of the future of growth and density in Boulder, probably a little more accepting of density than I might be, but that's all right. It's a different view. And I thought she had a thoughtful response to the question. And, you know, she does support some density increases at major intersections with community input, and I think that's important. And also seems unaligned with, you know, the major schisms in, you know, the Boulder community on these issues. And I think she will do a good job in considering those kinds of issues and rendering an objective and dispatch and judgment. That would be my choice.
Great. And on the stack, I've got Aaron, Junie, and then Mary. So Aaron, go ahead.
Thanks. Well, I agree. This is a time where we can't go wrong. I've had the chance to speak with both Aaron and Lisa before. And also, I want to call it that we also had some other strong applicants as well. It was a really great year for planning board. I'll mention Lisa Gargano, who was on the county planning commission for a number of years and did a good job on that. So I think we're gonna do very well. I will echo Bob's comments about Aaron's professional experience. When I was on the planning board, you know, I was there as a layperson and I, you know, did not have a professional expertise with the area of planning or architecture. And I found having one or two design professionals on the board was extremely helpful. I learned a lot from them. And they, we always got, I thought, too, a better outcome because of the input that they supplied. So I think that's gonna be the big fundamental reason why I'll support Aaron. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary, you're next. Mary Young?
Sorry, I forget to unmute. So I want to agree with everyone about how we had some great candidates and I really appreciate that people are coming forward. One of the things that won me over with Lisa Smith was the answer to the question that I asked. And I asked my question with no answer in mind. And my question was, what is at the intersection of planning and social justice? And her response was like, yeah, exactly, that's it. I didn't know what I was looking for, but her answer, which was systems of power, just blew me away. And I thought it was right on. That, along with the credentials that Mark mentioned earlier, as well as, you know, one thing that I want to just kind of step back from this and mention is that this is the planning board. And I think that it's important and essential that the planning board weigh in on mass and bulk of buildings. But as Aaron stated, you know, laypeople, you know, beyond that, aren't, it's not a design board, it's the planning board. And we actually do have a design board, which is the Design Advisory Board. Many years ago, when it used to be the Downtown Advisory Board, DDAB, and then, I forget exactly when, but it became the Design Advisory Board to look at buildings throughout the whole city. And we never kind of stepped back from the whole situation to think about how that has an impact in terms of how we look at our boards holistically. But I think that now that it's the Design Advisory Board, I would just like to bring up the idea that one of the things that we could do is to have the Design Advisory Board appoint an ex officio member to the planning board and then send more of the site reviews over to the Design Advisory Board, which is made up solely of architects and who can provide more feedback on the design of buildings than a board that is made up solely of architects. And that is what they do if they look at design. So it seems to me that this is one way that we can address one of the issues that has come up from the Design Advisory Board in their letters to us, that they say, you know, they, in a nutshell, don't see enough action. So this would be a way to really deploy a board that was just so willing to make recommendations on building design and have them participate in the planning board as an ex officio. So all that is to say that it's the planning board and I think that a planner is more suited to be on the planning board. That, along with her response to my question, just blew me away for Lisa Smith.
I've got Rachel and then Junie.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I wanted to speak in support of Aaron and also just make a couple of general comments and observations. First, we have been telling people First, we have been telling people, apply again, it matters, we consider that, do it, it's, it's a good thing, but we don't seem to be taking that into account super well. So Erin, this will be her second application, I believe. And so if I understand what we're saying to applicants, like that should be a little bit of a feather in her cap. And if all other things are equal, it would go her way. And also for people like me who haven't been on Planning Board, it is crucial that we have, I think, the professional expertise across the board. So the fact that we are losing our architect is, is pretty critical to me. And as I understand it, that's a useful perspective. And again, without that background, I think it's, it's important that Planning Board can funnel the information up through all of the eyes that we need it to go through. And then lastly, we did agree to be nonpartisan in our appointments. And I'm a little bit worried that we are acting in a partisan way. If we go five to four again, even if the applicants themselves don't have a, a label next to them, if we're lining up in partisan, it sort of indicates to me, given that we had a lot of applicants and I, I, I thought about nominating several, that it would seem that we would have a wider diversity of who we're backing. And that sort of smacks of something that, that is partisan to me. And that worries me. Thanks.
Junie?
Thank you. I kind of disagree with the, with the comment about the partisanship. But I think that's another discussion that we can have offline. But I just wanted to make a comment for Erin. And although I didn't have the opportunity to meet her, I really enjoyed her application. And I remember I put down in my notes when Mary asked her the question about intersection of planning and social justice, she talked about affordability, accessibility, and she also mentioned transit corridors. So I'm thinking as well, I think part of it is we want to put people on boards who not just have our values, but also have the value of the entire community. And, you know, and our community is about affordability, accessibility, and also transport. So I think it's very important that we put people on board that is, that is really representative of the community. And I wanted to say as well, I, I know Lisa personally, I know she's a great candidate, she's a wonderful person. I don't know if I can say that. She's applied for many things, a few, maybe three other boards. And I would like to nominate her for something else instead of this one because again, I think we need that architect. And I know that Mary mentioned, you know, architecture and design boards are two different things, but architecture also take into account planning and design and construction. So I think it's very important that we keep that in mind. Again, and to me, what really drew me to her is the fact that she talked about affordability, accessibility, and also the transit corridor aspect. She took a really holistic approach. So I think really, I really like her application and I will be voting for her today, even though I've never met her and I don't know her, and I do know Lisa personally, actually. Thanks.
Anyone else like to speak? Okay, I'll jump in. We do have two good applicants here. And I think that, that there are very, very strong arguments for each of them. I'm going to speak to why I'm going to support Lisa. One of the things that I'll point out is she served on other boards before, particularly the Scientific and Cultural Facilities District Board. There was another one that she served on. She's got a master's in planning, so she absolutely understands the trade-offs with land use. And when, when she's looking at a site review, I expect her thoughts will go towards the interconnections with the, the other properties around and with how the, the project, whatever it is, will fit into the context it's in. Because in planning, that's kind of what you're, you're focusing on is the contextual situation and how the building will serve the community. I just want to second what Mary said about her answer to Mary's question. She mentioned systems of entrenched power and talking about how we can deconstruct those structures of power through land use decision-making. Right after that, she mentioned that affordable housing is a huge problem in Boulder, which we know. She talks about some of our naturally affordable housing as aging. And, and then she spoke specifically to preservation, which I think is a really important part of how we need to be thinking about where we, site projects and what we do with them, how we do not displace people when we're in the process of doing that. She did, as Mark Wallach pointed out, talk about the 22,000 additional that we could end up with, the 22,000 folks that we could end up with, with our zoning for about 60, 200 more dwelling units. She said, doing it rapidly would be bad, but we need to look at where we would do it. And we need to consider duplex and triplex and single-family dwellings. So it seems to me like that certainly is not something that you would hear from, from certain sections of the community. I, I feel like she will do a good job of representing the entire spectrum. And I really did think that her answer to Mary talked about bringing an equity lens to the planning process. In addition to just focusing on affordable housing, what were the other components of equity that she, she would consider? So I, I'm going to support Lisa. And I would offer anyone else who wants to speak, this is a chance. Okay, seeing none. Lynette, what do we do here?
We start with Lisa.
Okay, all in favor of Lisa, please indicate with the chat.
Sam, I'm going to say yes, I just, I'm missing my chat bar for a moment, so.
Okay, great. I've got nearby, Mark, Mary, Adam, and I'm going to vote for Lisa, so that's five. So Lisa Smith will be appointed to the Planning Board. Great, and thank you all for applying, everyone who did. And I do also want to call out Lisa Gargano as well, like Erin did. I served with her on the 2015 COT Plan Steering Committee, and she did a great job, and she's done a great job with the county. Bob had raised his hand to say something?
Yeah, I just want to make an observation, kind of following up on, on Rachel's comment before we voted. While it's interesting, and it's interesting that the last, the first three we tackled all came down to five-four votes. I, I don't want people to come away with, from, from these discussions that this is a deeply divided council or that we have very deep philosophical differences. I, I think, I think this has been a very civil discussion. I know it will continue to be a civil discussion. There may be a couple of other split votes, and that's fine. And I just think that, that, that represents a couple of things. Number one, we've got some really, really great candidates, and we could be nominating three or four or five people for these things. I think people restrain themselves from that just simply because it makes it a little easier if we, we only pursue two, but we certainly can be complimenting virtually everybody who's applied for these things. And the fact that our votes are five-four, I think, just reflects that, that the nine of us represent lots of different people, lots of different interests and views and policies and considerations in this community. And, and I don't want anybody to walk away from these five-four votes and any other split votes we're about to have, thinking that this council is deeply divided or that we have a different vision from each other for the community. Because I think our visions are largely aligned. I think it just represents the quality of the candidates.
Well, thank, thank you, Bob. I appreciate that, and I think that's true. And, you know, it, it has often been the case in the boards like this, where there, there's a lot of decision-making power, that, that the votes do not all go unanimously. They often have some kind of split, whether it's five-four or six-three or seven-two. So it's quite common, actually, to not have unanimity on these particular boards and many of the other boards, in fact. So, yeah, it is not a, it is not an indication of, of any kind of animosity or acrimony. Mary reminds me that, you know, one of the, the points that she made, and I think is really important, is that we do want architectural input into the planning process. It doesn't necessarily have to be somebody who sits on the, the board. And so one of the reason that we would, would have an ex-officio in the room and not just kick projects to that, the Design Advisory Board, but have a Design Advisory Board member would be so that we would have that professional expertise input into the board while they're reviewing their site plan or a concept review. So I, I think Mary made a very important suggestion for being able to incorporate that kind of expertise into the board, and I think we should bookmark that and come back to it later. And Bob makes a suggestion that I agree with, that we go to cannabis next. If any, oh, Erin would like to add to what I said.
Yeah, I just want to support getting the Design Advisory Board involved more. That's definitely a positive thing. I do want to say, though, that's the, that the Planning Board does deal with professional issues beyond just architectural design. So things about how buildings address the street and, you know, how different uses interact with the public realm. I think, just wanted to make the point that you do, you do still get things that intersect with professional issues beyond the architectural details.
Very good. So Bob's suggestion was that we go to cannabis next. I think one of the reasoning for that would be that there are many, many applicants that were seating a new board, and that if, we have applicants who've applied to cannabis, who've applied to other boards as well. So if we end up putting them on cannabis, they may come off of other potential boards. So.
I'd just add to that, that in, in the, we, we have three categories that we have to fill. Marijuana industry, which we have a lot of candidates for, health and education, which we have a very small number for, and community at large, which we have a very small number for. And as, as Sam said, I, I think because we have a limited number for health and for community at large, that is probably, if, if some of those folks were appointed here, that probably takes them off of applications for other boards. And I hate to do those boards first and then have to come back to this one. So I think this one makes sense to do next.
If there's any disagreement, could you either speak up or put something in the chat? Okay, great. So here we are at cannabis, and I'm going to try and unpack this to make it the simplest possible. So why don't we start with our health and education folks? And we've got three nominees for that. Would somebody like to nominate one of those? And we need to appoint two, by the way. Well, Bob, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I'll just nominate both of them right now. I thought both Brian Keegan and Tom Kuntzman had the requisite medical and healthcare background and interest to be our health and education folks on this board. They, they were outstanding applications, outstanding interviewees, and this seems to me like a, probably one of the easier choices we'll make tonight.
Okay. Does anyone have another nomination? Okay, so hearing none, I will close nominations. And then by acclamation, Brian Keegan and Tom Kuntzman will be appointed to the Cannabis Licensing and Advisory Board. Okay, moving on to the next one, let's work on community at large, because again, that has fewer applicants, and we have three to appoint there. So taking nominations for anyone for the community at large, either voice or text. In that case, I'm going to make some nominations here. I will, okay, so we have one, Mirabai nominates Robin.
No, that was me. That was Mary, sorry.
Mary does, Robin, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I nominate, I nominate.
Robin, okay. And then Rachel asks, can you confirm who all qualifies? So in my matrix, and there on the board, I think on the right-hand side is the community at large. Rachel, do you see that column that says community at large? It is, for the record, Michael Christie.
I do, sorry, when, yeah, my, my screen's toggling. I got it up now, thanks.
Okay, very good. Bob nominates Michael Christie. Erin nominates Sarah Regan. Okay. I'm going to nominate Rick Munoz. Anyone else? So if I've got this correctly, we've got Sarah Regan, Robin Noble, Michael Christie, and Rick Munoz. Does that sound right?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes, Erin.
In the, in the diagram we have up there, Rick Munoz is not listed in the community at large section.
So let me turn to staff and say, staff, is there a reason why is Rick Munoz in the industry?
Sam, this is Debbie. I believe that he is. I'll double-check that. But on the graphic that you have on the board, it shows him under the industry, but I will double-check that right now.
In our packet, it had industry, the initial one.
It does, okay. Interesting, he did not, he did not speak to that in his interview, and I didn't see it in his application. So I withdraw the nomination for Rick Munoz. And then what that means, I believe, is we have three nominations for three slots. So unless there's any objection, I'm going to say that by acclamation, we have Robin Noble, Michael Christie, and Sarah Regan.
Do we get to specify the one-year term versus the two-fives?
Yeah, I think we actually probably want to come back and do that, because don't we have the same issue with the health or no? So I thought we'd collect our people, Rachel, and then work on term length, is that okay?
Fine with me.
Okay.
Sam, I have a question.
Yes.
Because actually, when I was listening to Rick Munoz, he really talked about his community experience, his personal experience with marijuana. So I'm wondering if we decide not to nominate him as a community at large, because I also wanted to nominate him because of his compelling life experience. Can you hear me? You're frozen.
No, no, I can hear you.
Okay, so that means that then he will be in the, the industry, then while we still have the same opportunity to nominate him. So I think, I'm wondering, can staff find out for us and then do industry and help, ex-officio first, then come back to it? Because I think Rick Munoz is a very, very good candidate.
Well, if he is in the industry, then we need to know that through probably his application. And so staff, have you been able to find his application? Because it should be in our packet, yes.
Sam, I'm reading it right now. I don't see anything that says he works in the industry. It says he's used it for years and that he's, he's, he does things with Bitcoin and he's had conversations with some businesses about it, about using Bitcoin. And maybe that's why, where the confusion comes from.
Sam, this is Debbie. So this graphic that you have up on the screen, that was provided to us by Licensing and CAO's office. So I believe it was Sandra and Michonne who provided this graphic, and they put these people in these buckets.
Got it. You know, it, it's interesting, if they took his Bitcoin and his conversations with marijuana shops as him being in the industry, that would be kind of like disqualifying somebody who provides them with coffee cups or something and defining that as being in the industry. So this is unfortunate that we're at this point, and we have, have that question outstanding. I guess one thing that we should find out is, would there be enough support for him in community at large that this would matter? And so let me ask, besides Junie and I, would anyone else be supporting Rick Munoz to be on this board?
He's not in my top three.
Okay, and so I've got two other people who would support him. It's back three, now four. Okay, so he would get a lot of support. So my, my suggestion here is that we go ahead and put him on in commu, well, not put him on, consider him, I'm sorry, in community at large. And if he gets on, then we need to, to chase it down. If he does not turn out, if he turns out to be in the industry, then we may need to return to this. And that's not completely unheard of. We've done single-board appointments at later times when needed. So I, I'm going to make a game day decision here. Tom or somebody else, jump in if it's wrong. I would like to consider Rick Munoz in this group. And if he gets on, we'll do a little more work. If he doesn't, it's not an issue.
Yeah, Sam, the, the challenge is, in his answer to the question about professional, there's a question, does please disclose any personal business or friends or family connections to the marijuana industry that you have? And he answered, I don't have any personal connections with the cannabis industry. That may be where the confusion's arising. He didn't say they didn't have any business, and maybe they just took that as a default.
I see, okay. Well, we'll work through it in this way, and then we will sort out anything that needs sorted out later. So let's see, so who have we got here? I've kind of lost the thread. We've got Rick nominated, Robin nominated, Michael Christie nominated. I'm sure I'm missing somebody. It scrolled out past. So who do we, Lynette, who's nominated so far?
I believe we have Michael, Robin, Sarah, and Rick.
Got it. So that's four people for three slots. And the way that we normally do this is, we will go through, and we will say, this is for the five-year term. And then we'll have a vote. And then we'll say, this is for the five-year term, and we'll have a vote. And then we'll say, this is for the one-year term, and we'll have a vote. And so when we do that, and we have the vote, whoever wins, if somebody's a clear winner with five votes, then they get that term. If we have no more than four votes for a person, then we remove the lowest vote getter and move on. So with the four that we've got, Lynette, what's the order?
We start with Michael Christie.
Hang on one second. Aaron wants to say something.
Thanks, Sam. And so that, that process works just fine. And I just want to remind folks that a one-year term is not necessarily a booby prize, because I think we generally, if somebody has a, a short term and is, is doing a good job, that they almost always get reappointed. So just point that out.
Thank you, okay. So we start with Michael Christie. All in favor of Michael Christie, give me a text that says for a five-year term. So I've got Bob. Okay, here's a bunch. Rachel, Aaron, Junie, Mark, and I would support him as well, Adam. So I think we, we have an acclamation for Michael Christie for one of the five-year terms. Okay.
I support him as well, but I don't know why. So in, just kind of an aside here, in the chat box, I'm appearing in the shade of blue. I don't know what that means. And you didn't see my message, so I'm just wondering if I'm showing up or not.
I saw you say Mary, and then I saw you say me too.
Okay, you, okay, cool.
Mary, and just to note that your, your messages appear to yourself different than they appear to everyone else.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have Michael Christie, and then that the remaining three are Sarah, Robin, and Rick Munoz. And so of those three, looking at a five-year term, are we going reverse alphabetical this time? Lynette?
Yes, that's correct.
And so I have to slot Munoz in. Okay, so it will be Sarah Regan, Robin Noble, and Rick Munoz will be the order we take that in. So in favor of Sarah, so either just text this, text either Sarah, Robin, or Rick. So Rachel is for Robin, Bob is for Sarah, Aaron's for Sarah, Adam's for Robin, Mary's for Rick. Okay, I've got to count these up. Hang on one second. So Robin gets two, three. So Mirby, you said Rick, Robin, so I think, okay, so is it Rick Munoz or Robin? Mirby, could you clear up who you'd like to, okay, Rick, okay. So for Rick, we have one, two. I see two, so Mary and Mirby, and I will vote for Rick, so that's three. And then for Robin, we have one, two, and so Junie. So we have four for Rick. Mary, Mirby, Sam, and Junie, four for Rick. And then we have two for Sarah, and two for Robin. And that does make sense, because that totals eight. So Lynette, what am I missing?
Hold on, I have to count and catch up.
So I see, Mirby's Robin is not a Robin, so Robin has one.
Three for Sarah.
Okay, three for Sarah. That's what, oh, yeah, Bob, Sarah, Sarah, got it, okay. And then that means Robin received two, is that correct? So then we have three for Sarah, and, and that math works out. So we have four for Rick and three for Sarah. So we, we will do a runoff between Rick and Sarah for the five-year term, correct? Sorry, between. So we do a runoff between Rick and Robin for the five-year term. Sorry.
Sam?
Rick and Sarah, I apologize. I apologize.
Sam, excuse me?
Yes.
I just got an email from one of the lawyers in my office. The reason that Michonne put Rick Munoz in the industry, industry category, was he's, he said he was developing a product for sale to the marijuana industry.
And that's probably Bitcoin. But, but selling to the marijuana industry is not necessarily disqualifying as being part of the industry, right?
That's your call. And she, she said she wasn't sure whether the product would be sold to other people, and it wasn't clear whether it was Bitcoin or not. But I, I just wanted you to have that information. Absolutely, your call.
Okay. I'd say we keep him here, because I don't, I don't have any sense that he works for a grow operation or a dispensary, so. Okay. So Lynette, where are we?
Excellent question.
I think we'll run off between Sarah and.
And Rick. And we start with Rick.
And hang on one second. Rachel wants to speak.
Yeah, I just, I guess I'm a little bit confused. And to me, Robin was the only person who spoke very precisely about needing to look at the health impacts that, like, families are experiencing from concentrations in marijuana and things like that. And I don't know that this board is going to have that sort of representation without her on it. So while we're making these considerations, I just wanted to make sure, like, Rick is a, I liked him as a candidate as well, but there's going to be a lot of people pretty pro with the, the industry side. And I want to make sure that we are representing the other side with our at-large, and I'm not sure we're doing that with this vote. Thanks.
Okay, so Mary Young agreed with Rachel. Adam Swetlik, second to Rachel. I, I feel a couple of things on that personally. I feel like health and education is, that's one of the intents there, and that's why we put two people that are health professionals there. And I, I don't disagree. We can have this discussion now or later, depending on what we want. My, my inclination towards Rick was mostly because of his lived experience with medical marijuana. And, you know, we, we think mostly about recreational marijuana at this point, because it's become a much larger industry. And it seemed to me like Rick would bring the, the focus to how are patients being treated and cared for within the medical marijuana industry? And, you know, what, what are the systems between recreational and medical that might not work so well? So I wasn't actually nominating Rick against Robin. I just thought Rick would be important, so. See, may I just want to speak to this before we vote? I think that's important. Okay, so Lynette?
You'll start with Rick first, which, whatever, whatever term you want to begin with.
Okay, we're doing the five-year term right now, is the discussion. So all in favor of Rick for the five-year term, just type Rick. Okay, Mary, why are you confused?
I thought we're appointing three people, and so far I have that, we have Robin, Rick, and Sarah. Did we appoint Christie already? I'm, I lost track.
We appointed Christie already.
Okay, so we have two more seats to fill.
Correct.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Adam has a question.
Yeah, since we're now down to two, this is just down to two for the five-year, right? That doesn't preclude us from bringing in Robin again for the one-year term, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, just wanted to clear that up. Thank you.
Yep. So we have, for Rick, I have one, two, three, and I'm number four. So there's, and Adam is for Rick. So that's five for Rick, so we do not need to continue. So Rick gets a five-year term. And so the remaining two, I believe, are Robin Noble and Sarah Regan. Is that right, Lynette?
That's correct.
Okay. And so why don't we speak to, Emre, do you want to speak to Robin? Okay, so Bob, would you like to speak?
No, I don't. I was just voting. I don't need to speak to the candidate.
Okay. So let's do this between, unless, does anyone else want to speak between Robin and Sarah?
Yeah, sorry, I lost my, my text thing, but do you mind, Sam?
Oh, go for it.
Well, I, I nominated Sarah. I actually won't necessarily vote for her in this round now that we're at this point, but I did want to just speak up for her, because I thought her experience at the State Capitol was impressive, and she had some intelligent answers about the cannabis industry. So anyway, just since I nominated her, I did want to say some good words about her. But I actually, at this, in this round, will be supporting Robin.
Okay, so people continue to vote, because I've got Aaron down for Robin, and then I have two, and then, okay, Aaron's in for Robin. So I have one, two, three, there's Mirby. Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So I'm still missing one vote. So I have Bob, Mark, Rachel, Adam, Mary, Aaron, and Mirby. It looks like Robin's going to win regardless. One, two, three, four, five, six. So it's Robin for the one-year term for the at-large.
You're missing you, or?
No, no, I'm missing one more. Okay, Junie just came in. Okay, that, that's the one I was missing. So there we go. It's definitely Robin. And so Robin Noble will be the one-year term for community at large on cannabis. All right, and that brings us to industry. We are to appoint two. One-two-year and one-three-year term. And so I would open the floor for nominations for industry. So Bob nominates Alana. And then we've got Mark nominating Ashley, and Aaron nominating Sean. So we have Alana, Ashley, and Sean. And then we have Evan Anderson from Junie, so. Okay, so why don't we do this, Evan? Why don't we do this? I propose that we start with the three-year term. We have four nominees, and I will open up, does anyone want to speak to any of the nominees right now? Just jump in.
Sam, I will.
Great, Mark.
I thought Ashley Reingold had a very, very substantial background and resume, a lot of experience working with policy advisors, legislators, and the Department of Regulatory Agencies on rulemaking. She's a previous owner of a dispensary. She seems very sensitive to issues dealing with marijuana and children, and is looking for more collaboration between the industry and school districts to get out the appropriate message to kids. She's also a proponent of more equity and minority ownership in the cannabis industry, and I thought it was a, a very, very strong background.
Very good. So I've got Bob and then Aaron.
Yeah, I've lost my application, so I have to do this from memory, but, for cannabis. But Alana has spoken in front of council many, many times about the industry. I think she served on our advisory board, and was, as I understand it from other members of the advisory board, was a tremendous contributor as a member of the industry. Like, like Marcus mentioned about Ashley, she seems to be very concerned about ensuring that consumption happens only in the appropriate places and not by children. She's young and an industry owner, and I, I've heard nothing but great things about her from the people who served with her on the cannabis advisory board.
Thank you, Aaron, and then Junie.
Yeah, I'll, I'll echo those comments by Bob. And Lynette did a phenomenal job on the marijuana advisory panel. And then I'll just, this is a situation, we've got a lot of really good folks, so it's tough to narrow it down to two. But just to speak to Sean Coleman, I think most folks know Sean. He is, he has run for city council in the past. He's been involved in the industry for some number of years. He's very knowledgeable, and, and, and can represent the, I think, is a very good knowledge of the issues, and would do a great job on this board.
Thank you, Aaron, Junie.
Yes, I would like to nominate Evan Anderson, and I think it's because he's an owner in the industry, and he talked about, in his first answer, he talked about controlling access, about protecting students. And I live actually near Gosgrove, and that's one of the big issues with Boulder High that is next door, and with students and a lot of young people having access to marijuana and/or cannabis and using it. And he also talked about enforcement and ensuring that young people are protected. And he also talked about limiting the negative impact of, of that particular substance. So I thought his, his answers were really strong, and I was moved, even though I didn't know too much about that particular industry. I think from his answer, I think he's a really, really great candidate. But everyone else was really good, and I did like Sean as well.
And Adam?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I hope we can avoid having two owners in the two spots for the marijuana industry, just for diversity of opinion. I think it's important that we try to just limit it to one owner if possible.
Adam, who are the owners in this list of four?
As far as I know, it's Evan and.
Alana, for sure.
Yeah, Alana.
Okay, very good. Okay, so I think we're ready to go. We have four nominees, and we're going to do the three-year term. Lynette, what's the order?
I think we start from the bottom, because we didn't last time.
Can I ask a quick question? I thought Ashley and Alana were both owners.
My, my notes, and I won't claim to be the final authority on this, was that Ashley works as the compliance director for Terapin.
I have, that's correct, that's correct. I have that in my notes.
I have that as well.
Thank you.
Yep, so, so she, she will have compliance in her head, one way or the other, okay? So let's see, for the three-year term, why don't people just write in who they'd like to vote for? One is not mine. Okay, there's Junie, Evan. So I will vote for, so we have three for Alana, three for Ashley, one for Sean, one for Evan. I'm going to vote for Ashley for the three-year term, and so that's not enough for five. And so that means, Lynette, correct me if I'm wrong, that both Sean and Evan. And so that means, Lynette, correct me if I'm wrong, that both Sean and Evan get knocked out?
I believe that's correct, yes.
Yep. So now we have Alana and Ashley for the three-year term. Cast your vote. So we have five for Alana, so no need for any more votes. So Alana gets the three-year term. And now it's open back up for the one-year term. We have Ashley, Sean, and Evan. So please cast your vote, Ashley, Sean, or Evan. So I have six votes recorded, need two more. Mary is Ashley, that's four for Ashley. I'm going to vote for Ashley, so that's five. So Ashley gets the one-year term. And believe it or not, we have just seated a brand-new board once we vote to ratify all this. Thanks to everyone who applied. It is a big job. There's a lot developing. It's a new field and we appreciate your help in working our way through through issues in the field. So now.
We've decided on the health education. There's a one-year term and a three-year term.
Thank you for the reminder. I apologize for that. Let me get back. So who did we end up with?
Brian and Tom, by unanimous.
Right.
Just didn't decide.
You know, I'm open to suggestions, Bob. Thank you.
I don't have a suggestion, I just wanted to process point.
Well, let's get that done and then address ex officio. So I think they're both great. Why don't? Why don't we do this? We have a two-year and a three-year. So why don't we take the three-year and please write either Brian or Tom for the three-year? Okay, we have, it's Tom by acclamation for the three-year term. So then we have Tom and Brian. And then there's ex officio, Rachel. Oh, sorry, Adam's first. Adam, ex officio.
I believe we only had one applicant, so that was Allison Bailey, I think.
We also had Guard.
Okay. Nominate Allison Bailey then.
Well, can I pop in here with something?
Sure, go ahead.
Because it's, it's, sorry to interrupt, but it's a process thing. Because, you know, we, because of a glitch with the application process, we didn't have a chance to interview the other ex officio folks. And Mirby, chime in here at any time, Mirby and I, as the Board and Commission's Subcommittee, were going to provide an opportunity for them to be interviewed before our last business meeting, but then, of course, it didn't work out because of the virus situation. So I'm, so we have a situation where we have not had the chance to interview some of these folks through no fault of their own. And so I wonder if we might put off the ex officio appointments for that reason.
Well, I think it's the will of council. In my mind, we don't even have to do ex officio and we had the written applications for both of them, I believe. In fact, Allison's was supplemental to us, correct? Yep. So council say yes or no. Yes means we're going to do it tonight. No means you want to put it off.
I'm this, I'm confused. I thought we had like five more people that the applications came in late. So Allison was one of two that got in on time, but then there were another series that came in.
Lynette, do you remember?
Debbie, can you speak to that? I think they're all listed on the slide.
They are all listed on the slide. Those others all came in, but they were originally, they didn't go from the application point into the database. So they were included later, and I believe I sent all of those applications to you. And that was prior to our first appointment meeting, regular meeting, which of course, you know, has been a while. So none of those were actually interviewed except for Allison, I believe. And it had been suggested by Mirby that we hold, I think it was Mirby and Mary that suggested we hold interviews with them prior to that meeting, which of course didn't happen, so.
That's fine, and everybody says, no, we can wait. So there we go. So we're done for now. And we can, at this point in the future, maybe it comes up in the work plan discussion, set up an interview time for ex officio. It's not as critical, of course, as seeking the voting members, but we can do it as time allows. Everyone okay with that? Great. So before we run out of time, I would like to go on to Boulder Housing Partners because we've had a request that that person be seated before the next board meeting from Boulder Housing Partners. And let's see if I've got that right. Yep, we have two applicants. Sorry, we have two seats open, one for a five-year term and one for a two-year term. And this is technically a mayoral appointment by state law, but I, we always just treat it as another one and I do whatever council says. So is there a nomination for either of these seats? And you don't have to specify which, we're just after names at this point.
Sam, I'd like to nominate Matt Bissonnet.
Okay, very good. And then we have Julie Schoenfeld is nominated by Mary. Claudia Hansen Team is nominated by Aaron. Bob nominates Jan, so we have four going now. Somebody nominate, Junie, I don't believe Charlotte Pitts is in the Boulder Housing Partners. I believe that's the Housing Advisory Board. So we have. And has anyone nominated Matt Bissonnet? I don't think so, so I will nominate Matt Bissonnet.
I did, Sam.
You did, I'm sorry, I didn't catch it because it's not on the chat. Thank you. Okay, so I have four. I have Jan Burton, Claudia Hansen Team, Julie Schoenfeld, and Matt Bissonnet. Is that what you've got, Lynette?
Yes.
Great. Does anyone want to speak to any of these?
I'm happy to speak for Matt.
Go for it.
I think Matt Bissonnet is vastly qualified for this job. He's he's got huge experience as both an attorney and a banker for the largest affordable housing lender in the U.S. He seems to be familiar with every form of affordable housing finance vehicle and structure. He supports more transitional and supportive housing for the homeless. And he's worked in this, in the affordable housing industry since 1997. I just can't think of anybody more qualified to sit on that board and review the types of transactions that the Housing Authority reviews.
Very good. Then I've got Aaron and Bob.
Well, I think we have an embarrassment of riches for this board. I wish we had four or five spots. You know, I thought Matt was really impressive. I think, you know, we know Jan's depth of involvement with housing issues and the value she brings there. I thought Bill Rigler's approach to PR was really good and Julie Schoenfeld also brought some great qualities. But I'll speak for Claudia. Claudia applied to boards last year and and I've always found her to be a really sharp and incisive thinker on housing issues. She brings a strong social justice and inclusivity approach and is not afraid to go for new approaches and new ideas. So I think she'd be a really valuable addition to the board.
Great. And then we've got Bob and Mary.
Well, like Aaron, I'm going to speak as to all four candidates, and I think they're all outstanding. First of all, I agree completely with Mark on Matt Bissonnet. I'm going to vote for him for one of the spots. Because I, having served on the Boulder Housing Partners Board for three years myself as a council liaison, I will tell you that this is a board that's a very technical board that requires experience in financing, in law, in real estate development. This is not so much a policy board, that's safe for other boards. This is a board about building housing and Matt is eminently qualified for this board. Claudia has been a tireless advocate for affordable housing. She appears before council frequently. She's eloquent, she's knowledgeable, and she's passionate, and I think we couldn't go wrong with her. I happen to personally know Julie Schoenfeld. She and I worked together at Level Three Communications many, many years ago. She's a super smart lawyer. She's very dedicated. She's a mom. And she wants to be on this board for all the right reasons in creating affordable housing for our lower-income families. And then finally, I'll speak to Jan, who I nominated. I think most of you know Jan. Many of us have had the opportunity to serve with Jan on city council. Jan's number one priority always on council was affordable housing. And I think it's a very natural move for her from that advocacy on council to advocacy for affordable housing on the Board of Boulder Housing Partners. And I know that she will, having served on that board for three years myself, I know that Jan will fit in very well with the other board members.
Great. And then Mary?
So Bob touched on the reasons that I think Julie Schoenfeld will make a great board member, the fact that she's got real estate law and development law. And but the other thing is that she's also involved with the Home Wanted Campaign. And the Home Wanted Campaign, if you haven't heard of it, is it's a collaboration among the nine jurisdictions in Boulder County. And it's part of and organized by the Boulder County Regional Housing Partnership. So I think she would bring that big picture as far as the region perspective to this board along with those other qualifications. So that's why I'll be supporting Julie and I'll also be supporting Matt Bissonnet.
Rachel?
Just real quick, I agree, we have, as Aaron said, an embarrassment of riches and a lot of really good candidates. I also thought Bill Rigler was good in terms of bringing a pretty different and unique perspective to this endeavor. But as to the four that we are considering, I would just want to say maybe we don't want to appoint two attorneys. As that seems like a little bit overkill on the attorney side as an attorney. Thanks.
Very good. What's that?
No, I'm just commenting because we just elected three. We've got, yeah, three attorneys on council or four. Anyway.
Very good. Okay, so Jan Burton, Claudia Hansen Team, Julie Schoenfeld, Matt Bissonnet. This is an advisory vote, so we've got a five-year term. Let's start with that one. I assume that they're all nominated. So write in who you'd like to see between those four. So we have four for Matt. I'm going to vote for Matt, so Matt will get the five-year term. And then that leaves Jan Burton, Claudia Hansen Team, and Julie Schoenfeld for the two-year term. Please vote. Okay, and with my vote, it'll be five and Julie. So Julie Schoenfeld gets the two-year term. Okay, yeah, Aaron?
Just a quick kind of process question. Usually, not that it matters enormously, but we have a kind of a public record of support via kind of who's raising their hands on the video. In this case, much of this, the public record is the text. Are we recording? Are we making public? I guess this is a question for Tom, making public the chat?
Chris can confirm that. The plan is to record it and save it in the archives so it'll be available to the public.
Great. Thanks for confirming that.
That's correct.
Okay, good enough. We have five minutes before we start our briefing. And I'm going to turn to Tom. Tom, my inclination here would be that we vote to ratify the nominations we've made so far. That way, if we get to the end of the evening and it's 10:30 and we don't want to start the remainder, we could do, you know, another session of this and then vote to ratify that session.
That's fine, Sam. That's what I would do. I would also ask that you all vote to suspend the rules because your rules technically require a public hearing before you appoint. And I just like to confirm so there's no question about the ability of these folks to serve.
Great. So Bob moves that that we suspend the rules. Junie seconds. Are there any objections to suspending the rules? Hearing none. Are there any objections to? Okay, Bob moves that we ratify. Is there a second to Bob? Mirby seconds. So we will have a vote because we, it's harder to vote. I'm going to ask, is there anyone who wants to vote against the motion to ratify? Seeing none, that's unanimous. So we have seated Openspace Planning, Boulder Housing Partners, RAB, and our Cannabis Licensing and Advisory Board. That is great progress because we had a full board to seat, which is difficult to do, as we saw, at least time-consuming. And so at the end of the evening, they should get easier. I think the hardest remaining boards are TAB and Housing. And after that, there were fewer applicants for the other boards. So we'll bookmark this and maybe we want to take a two- or three-minute break and at seven o'clock, since we have told the public it would be at seven, that we will begin our briefing. So does that sound good to everyone? Anyone who's got an objection to that, please let me know. Very good. A few-minute break and then we'll come back for our COVID briefing. Thank you to staff for the support. This has really been pretty smooth, considering it's the first time we've ever done it remotely. Okay, it is seven o'clock. Jane, are we ready for our briefing?
Yeah, we are ready for the briefing. The first part of the briefing is going
The first part of the briefing is going to be Jeff Sayak from Boulder County Public Health. So Chris, can you put up the screen, and then Jeff will start off?
I am ready when you are.
Okay, take it away.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council, and Jane for inviting me. I really appreciate being able to do this and provide what I have as latest information. Again, my name is Jeff Sayak, I'm the Director of Boulder County Public Health. And with the last briefing, you had asked me for some more detailed information, so I'm bringing a little bit more of those statistics for you today in hopes that it can help answer some of those questions. Then what I'd like to do is just walk through where we are at this point, what we expect over these next couple of weeks. And I want to emphasize a few things that the Governor had talked about in these last several days. So let me just start with the statistics first. So as of today, we've got 115 positives in Boulder County. The average age of those are 47 years old. The number of residents that we have hospitalized out of that 115 are 20 at this point. The number hospitalized under age 60 are six. We have a total confirmed recovered count of 43. And it is important, I always like to continue to stress this, because this virus is a scary virus. It can definitely spread, and we know that. But we also want to remind people that most people that get this virus are going to recover fine from it, and the majority of the people that get it are going to have minor symptoms. So it is something we need to take very seriously, and we also want to emphasize with people that most people are going to recover and do fine with this virus. We do have about 29 pending disease investigations right now, and unfortunately, we have two people who have deceased from the virus. The total number of, I've got some hospital data that is current, some daily as of today and some in the last week. The total number of currently hospital cases that are reported in Boulder County are 36 at this point. I don't have it broken down by individual hospital, these are total for all hospitals. The total persons under investigation at hospitals at this point are 52. The medical surge bed availability, and this was back to a question that was asked last week, you know, as a daily report, is 235. So med surgical bed availability at this point is 235. The ICU bed availability is 27. The number of hospitals reporting shortages are zero at this point, which is good news for us in Boulder County. The number of hospitals reporting ICU bed shortages that are anticipated is two. The adult vents ventilation available is 82, and the pediatric available vents are 10 at this point. And the total number of acute care beds are 497. Total number of ICU-capable beds are 42. Number of hospitals that are reporting adequate supply of N95s for the next two weeks are three out of our six hospitals. I'll talk a little bit more about that supply as well. And then the number of hospitals reporting adequate supply of surgical procedure masks for the next two weeks is also three out of six. And the, one of the things that we've been struggling with, as I'm sure you've been following, is the supply of N95s and the supply of surgical masks, as well as other personal protective equipment. And if you'd watched what the Governor reported this week, there's a significant statewide shortage associated with that, as well as a national shortage. We continue to press that forward, not just from Boulder County, but from multiple counties across the state to the Governor's office. And I know the Governor's office continues to meet with the Vice President and press that issue at the national level. And as I believe you're all aware as well, the Governor has put a Innovation Task Force in place, and one of the focuses of the task force is to identify and find ways to produce PPE locally in the state. I don't have an update from that task force specifically. We do, in the next two weeks, we do expect to see an increase in cases. And one of the things that's important to think about here is that the orders went in place, but there's typically, there's typically a delay from the time that those orders went in place due to exposure and the onset of symptoms associated with that, and then another delay to the onset of an ICU admission. And that can be up to two weeks. So we know that we expect to see more people coming in over these next two weeks. It has been a pattern that we've watched across the United States, so we don't want people to give up hope and think that the orders that we're putting in place are not being effective. I'm going to talk more about what it means to be effective as we move forward, and potentially, when the orders get lifted, what has to be in place to help keep that curve down, so we don't continue to see surges. I wanted to talk, because this is an important concept, and it's not always easily understood, but you might have heard the Governor talk about RNOT values, and that we are at a, between a three and four. And what that really means and why it's important is that one person who is positive with COVID can infect three people. Those three people in turn can then affect nine people. Those nine people in turn can then affect 27 people, and so on and so forth. So the reason that these orders are so critically important is we want to be able to prevent the spread of that disease by having that spread multiply so quickly once it gets into the population. So following those orders right now is really critical for us in Colorado, so we certainly appreciate everything that anybody can do to make sure that they are following those orders, that they're staying at home. Handwashing is critically important if you do have to go out. Anytime you're touching knobs or touching a commonly shared surface, you want to make sure you're washing your hands or you're using an alcohol-based hand sanitizer. That is going to be critically important as we move forward into these upcoming weeks. The other thing that I think, that I wanted to focus on, is to just really make sure that people are aware that we're doing the best we can in the state of Colorado to really look at what projections we think are going to happen. I think the Governor did a good job of displaying what data he had, how he thinks our mitigation strategies moving forward are going to have an impact, and potentially what would need to be placed in order for those mitigation strategies to be lifted. And that's what I wanted to talk a little bit more about. If you've been following this nationally as well, you're hearing this reported in the national news, but there's three key capabilities for Colorado that are going to be necessary for us to move forward, and there's been some specific structures set up to try to put those in place. We know that even though we can reduce the steepness of that curve and how many people get the disease by putting in place orders, that if we don't have control on the backend of that, and when I say control, I mean that we have the ability to do monitoring in Colorado, that we have the ability to do community-based testing in Colorado, and that we have the ability to do capacity and containment in Colorado, that those things, once an order is lifted, we can, we could see surges back in our community again. So there's three different, in addition to the Innovation Task Force, there's been three focuses and work groups that have been set up. One is to build monitoring capacity. The other is to build community-based testing. So this is specifically to look at things like, how in Colorado can we support the advancement and comprehensive testing across a lot larger areas and test more people? And the third one is to really increase the capacity for containment. So much like was done in China, developing a workforce that will support, once the testing is in place, to be able to then do quickly isolation and quarantine of people who are positive. So as you hold down that, as you hold down that, the curve with your orders, you have less people eventually entering the hospital system, you're getting it under control with some of those orders, you then move back into making sure that you have better testing and containment of people who are positive in the community, and you're controlling the spread from that manner. The Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment is supporting the focus of these three groups, and are participating on some of these. And these three groups are linking back to the Governor's Innovation Task Force that's working on these areas as well, so that there's coordination and collaboration to move these things forward. The plans are all intended to be in place by April 15th, so that they can be implemented shortly after that. This is, as you can imagine, this is a lot of difficult, complex work, and there's a lot of people focused on this right now and working towards being able to get this in place. A lot of information. I want to, again, before I stop talking, just say again how much I appreciate the partnership with the City of Boulder. The staff at the City of Boulder have been wonderful. Jane has demonstrated strong leadership in making sure that we're working together across all of our communities, and it's been because of her leadership that we are so successful between the City of Boulder and the county. Also want to thank the city for participating so closely in our call center. All of our communities are now participating in our call center, and it helps us coordinate information back out. So I want to thank them specifically, and I'll stop there and see if there's any questions.
Very good. Bob has a question. Thank you, Jeff, to start with. We really appreciate these updates there for us and for our community, and appreciated you being on the Town Hall yesterday with Representative Nagus. So we'll start with a question from Bob.
Well, Jeff, first of all, I want to thank you for showing up virtually every Tuesday night at our council meeting. I know you're making the rounds with other council meetings throughout the county, and you're coordinating very closely with the state, and you must be working 100 hours a week, so I want to thank you for taking an hour every Tuesday night to share with the Boulder community what you know. Just a quick question, Jeff. The, this afternoon, Jane Brogdon sent out a link to a modeling from the Institute for Health Metrics and Evaluation, and you're probably familiar with the IHME. And the statistics shown in that for Colorado were pretty, well, for all the states, but focusing just on Colorado for the second, were pretty stark and alarming, and showed that we could start running out of beds, ICU beds and regular beds in the middle part of April as this peaks. Do you have any comment on this particular statistical study, whether you think it's credible or not credible, or too early to say? And if you think it is credible and that we'll start to run out of beds and capacities, what our plans are when we start to peak in mid-April?
Definitely, and I'm going to ask Dr. Visser to address this as well, but what I have looked at that, and what I would say is, I compared that to what the Governor's estimates were, and there is a difference in those numbers, depending on whether it's, again, in that RNOT three, or RNOT four, or less than that category. So there is a little bit of a difference in the estimates from that modeling versus what the Governor had presented the other day. And this speaks to the challenge associated with all the factors that go into any of those kind of models. They're really difficult. It depends on how well people follow orders, what percentage of mitigation we're at in the state, and so it's not an easy, it's not an easy compilation, I know that for sure. So I'll stop there, and I'll defer any further answer to Dr. Visser, because I know he's been speaking specifically with the Colorado Hospital Association, and they've been doing some modeling as well.
Thanks, Jeff.
So Dr. Visser, just to remind you, you may need to hit star six on your phone to unmute.
Great, yeah, all set. Thank you, Jeff, and thank you for the question, Bob. I think you're asking the question that we're all trying to answer, and in the absence of more widespread testing, it's really made projections difficult. So we are relying on the experience of other places that have preceded us. However, it's hard to put into that formula the impact that stay-at-home orders and social distancing has had. We've looked at a couple of models from Advisory Board, Johns Hopkins, as well as the Hospital Association, as well as the state, and they vary quite a bit. I did speak to the Medical Director for Colorado Hospital Association this evening, and they still feel like their best estimate is somewhere between the middle and end of April. Just based on some of the data that they're starting to get back, they said just over the weekend that it's pushed out three days. And so I guess the one thing I would say, and this is, it's probably too early, but I mean this as encouragement for us to continue with our efforts to stay at home, is that the data that we're seeing, that we share with all the other hospitals, and what the Hospital Association is seeing, is that there does seem to be a flattening of the new cases over the last three days. Small sample size, maybe way too early to say, but we're all hopeful that this represents a beginning of the flattening of the curve, secondary to the efforts of your leadership and the community and the response to the requests. So that could make a tremendous difference. We are still working under the assumption that we will need four to five times the critical care beds. We've developed a capacity plan and a model or contingency plan that allows us to increase our critical care beds and ventilated patients to that four to five-fold number. And those would be the patients that we really need to take care of, and nobody else can take care of. We're now moving into a way that we can manage the surge, because we can't do that and have four to five times inpatient beds. That would require a hospital to hold 600 patients. But if we can move the patients out more quickly and keep patients from coming into hospital, then we can manage those acutely ill, critical care patients at that five-to-five increase. And I know that other hospitals are working towards that number as best they can. I can talk a little bit more about our contingency plans and the things we're doing in my report, but the short answer is, it's concerning and somewhat alarming. But having said that, if we can continue to bend this curve and even use these next two weeks wisely, and extend it out to three weeks, I think we can hopefully build the capacity to a place where we can manage that peak in surge.
Great, thank you, Dr. Visser. Junie had a follow-up. She asked, do we know how many cases we have in the city? And is there a reason why or why not we can break down further from the county level to the city?
This is Jeff, and I'm sorry I did not break it down by city. We should be able to do that, and I will make sure that I follow up and send that to Jane so she can share it with council members following the meeting.
Great, thank you very much. Junie, is that good? And then we have Mary next.
So I had another question, but I'll ask this question as a follow-up to Junie's question, is, is there, what would a breakdown of the number of cases per city within the county provide to us?
So I, is that I think it allows you to look at a geographic location of where we're getting positives, but one of the things that I think is really critical, and Dr. Visser has touched on this, is right now, our testing capacity is pretty limited. So I would not want it to lead us to believe that that's the only places that cases are or are not. We know that we have more widespread virus in our community, and that's the way that we're approaching this, which is why, obviously, we supported the orders going forward. And so I think that's really the biggest thing, is not to think that just because that's where the cases are showing up positive with those numbers, that that means that's how the cases are distributed across our county.
I have a kind of a follow-up to that, is, so there's a lot of travel to and from the communities within Boulder County and also outside of Boulder County. And so I guess I'm trying to understand how, how quantifying the number of cases within a certain boundary, what does that tell us, or not tell us, with respect to people moving to and from and in and out of the boundaries?
Yeah, so in terms of right now, it doesn't tell us a lot. I can tell you that as we started to learn about early cases, that most of those cases were actually associated with travel. So when we were first starting to see positives, we could see that travel was a big influencer in terms of the numbers of cases that we were seeing and the types of cases. But right now, we, it's not going to tell us much. The reason that we really need to see enhanced testing across the state, again, just to go back to that point, and why it's important, is because if we can hold the curve down with orders, we can enhance testing so it's much more available at a wider scale, then we can do more of the containment. Then we can do more of the containment and suppression, isolation, quarantine, and help keep that curve down moving forward in the long run. But that will take all of those things that I talked about before. It will take much more increased monitoring. It will take much more increased testing and it will take enhanced capacity on workforce to be able to do those things, all of which are actively being worked on right now.
So Mary, if I could colloquiate real quick. Is there, so generally speaking, we have a few hospitals in the county. And so is it the case that people, say, within Boulder and near Boulder, tend to go to Boulder Community Hospital and people in Longmont tend to go to the hospital in Longmont, people out east tend to go to Vista? What both behavior do you see as far as where people report? And then do you typically transfer between hospitals if there are capabilities they need at other hospitals?
Dr. Visser, do you want to take that one?
Sure. So we care for a large percentage of the population of those that live in Boulder, the city. However, at least a third or half of our patients come from outside of Boulder as well. So we serve all of Boulder County as well as Superior, Bloomfield, and in some cases, all over the state. But the majority of, we probably have the largest share of Boulder patients. Some of that is dictated by the service that's provided. So we have a more robust, comprehensive services like, and Good Sam as well. Some is driven by insurance. Having said that, I would say the word predominant provider of people that reside within Boulder itself. In terms of transfers, right now, I think everybody is managing the cases that come to them. So anytime you are transporting a patient who's infectious and potentially critically ill, it puts the transport personnel at risk and it also puts the individual being transported at risk, particularly if they're ill or unstable. However, we are in constant communication with the other hospitals, not just within the county, but across the front range. And everybody has made a clear commitment to share capacity resources and if need be, the care of patients from other areas if we have the capacity and they don't. We aren't anywhere close to needing to do that yet. And I think the primary goal is for each of the hospitals to try and increase the capacity that they have to care for the patients within their community, recognizing that every community and every hospital is going to be overwhelmed. Hopefully that helps answer some of that.
It does. Thank you. Are there any other questions for Mr. Zayek or Dr. Visser? Seeing none, I think I will thank you for your update. We appreciate it. I think we're going to expect to have special meetings or meetings, regular meetings every week headed out through at least the end of April. So when you're available, if you're available, we really appreciate the information we get from you.
Sure thing.
Thank you both. So Jane, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thanks. And if Chris would put up the slide, that would be great. So we're going to start with the city update and I'll do just the brief introduction. But then Kurt Fernhumber will be talking about the work that Housing and Human Services has been doing. That Bowden will talk about the business services that we've been providing and investigating. And then Cheryl Patelli and Katie Dulling are going to talk about our initial take on financial issues that may be coming our way. So on to the first slide, which is a reminder about why we're here and what our guiding principles are. The most important thing that I put in for our city workers and our city itself is to preserve the healthcare system, to flatten the curve, which both Jeff and Rob talked about earlier. We need to follow the stay-at-home order. We need to be focused on doing that and keeping people safe. We want to ensure the continuity of government by delivering essential services. And that's going to be an important factor when we start talking about our financial update a little bit later this evening. And then finally, we always want to focus on equity and put equity at the center of everything, making sure that all community members are included in the work that we're doing and served equally well. We have a response team which is working to provide you and our employees and our community with effective communications, continuity of operations, meeting emergency needs by coordinating with our many partners, caring for employees in the community in an equitable fashion, and identifying ways that we can, that the pandemic may exacerbate existing inequities and trying to ameliorate those. So on to the next slide. So a reminder about essential services. Please have this in mind when you hear the report from Cheryl and Katie. Law enforcement, which includes police and our rangers and the open space system, fire and rescue, our utilities, our transportation access, and our response team. Other essential services, depending on the day, are forestry, right-of-way inspectors and building inspectors, and obviously our internal operations so that we can keep all of these virtual meetings going through our IT department, our city attorney's office, our finance department as well. So the next slide is me turning it over to Kurt Fernhumber, the Director of Housing and Human Services, who has several slides to bring you up to date on what we've been doing in that arena. So Kurt?
Good evening, City Council. I'm going to talk to you about five things this evening. I'll start off with the COVID Recovery Center, but there's actually many other things that we're working on to support the community through this. I'll also be giving an update on changes to our sheltering system, the questions that came up last week about camping and parking, rental assistance, and finally, our approach to supporting human services within our community. Next slide. So the COVID Recovery Center, when I updated you last week, we had been open about four days. Now it's about 11 days. We've had a total of 10 individuals who have been checked into the CRC. Four have been discharged by medical personnel because they have gotten better and taken the time to heal. So that's encouraging. As of this morning, there were six individuals that were there. We've made some improvements over the last week. And this is in the areas of improving policies and procedures that we had. We've also, a big one is increasing our driver availability to 16 hours a day. Previously, we were just picking up in the evenings when shelters were having check-in. We had someone that needed to be collected the morning before last at 3:30 in the morning. We had another one at 1:30 this afternoon. So the 16-hour availability is very beneficial to the residents who need this service. We've also created with our Channel 8, a training, a couple of training videos for individuals that will volunteer or work at the CRC. So in looking at the first 11 days, I would say that the biggest impact that we've had in addressing the flattening of that curve is taking a handful of individuals out of the sheltering system, both in Boulder and in Longmont, and giving them a place, not only where they're healing, but where they're not spreading the disease. So I think we're very hopeful that this, that the CRC will have an impact on particularly the homeless community, but how it is contained within Boulder. Next slide. So this is just a brief summary. On the left, you have the last, I think, six days of volunteers and staff that worked at the site. So you can see that we're requiring over 600 hours or about 100 hours a day in volunteer time. Now, these are volunteers that are working at the CRC. We've completed 95 shifts. But since we opened 11 days ago, there's been almost 1,000 hours of volunteers from the community, which is really, well, community and staff, about half or a little more than half are from the community. So it's very encouraging to see how our community has stepped up. And 85% of our shifts are currently filled over the next few days. However, I would put a plug in, as you might expect. We need more volunteers for that midnight to 8:00 AM shift. Next slide. So last Friday, we made some changes to our sheltering system, which included Bridge House as well as Boulder Shelter for the Homeless. We extended the severe weather shelter to be open every night through the month of April. It was anticipated that tonight would actually be the last evening, then it would be weather triggered. We also opened daytime hours from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at 30th Street to provide facilities, restroom facilities for hand washing and limited showers. We also had to set up screening. So we'll have screening going on tomorrow as well during that period of time to ensure that any individuals entering the shelters would be screened for symptoms of COVID. Next slide. So the shelter capacity, that was another question that we've received over the last couple of weeks. On the left side is the nightly census in North Boulder, from the Boulder Shelter for the Homeless. You'll see in the blue, those are individuals that are using the facility as part of our Housing First program. And then you'll notice it also starts at 100. So if you looked up on the left-hand side there, it goes from 100 to 160 individuals. The navigation, those are individuals in the navigation program. And then the green are those individuals that have been transported from 30th Street to the North Boulder Shelter, typically between 8:30 and 10 o'clock in the evenings. On the right-hand side is severe weather shelter. As you may know, we have a 72-bed capacity at the shelter. There's a few nights where it goes over 72. However, that is a result of individuals that leave early and others that take their bed afterwards. So at no point has severe weather shelter gone beyond the 72-bed capacity. Last Friday, there was, you'll see in the orange, the individuals that are transported from 30th Street to the North Boulder Shelter. And that is done in collaboration with our transport that we've set up for the COVID Recovery Center. There's been an improvement on turnaways since we implemented this. Last Friday, however, there were seven individuals that were turned away without housing. And last night, there was two individuals. And typically, those are individuals that are coming well after the facility has closed. Next slide. So the other question that was presented for us to address briefly was safe parking and sanctioned camping. That was something that we heard from City Council at the retreat in January. We had done some work on it in preparation for the April 7th visit to council, which has now been taken off the calendar for now. But we, three and a half years ago, City Council looked at this after coming back from a Portland trip. We also looked at other communities who had implemented this or had started to implement similar approaches. There's five sort of main buckets of feedback that we received from those communities. One is that once they get into that type of environment, it discourages them from seeking services. There also was a measured increase in crime from the various communities that implemented it. And we experienced that a little bit at the Ninth Street encampment as well. And it also has an impact on emergency services. So police and fire have a sort of a larger workload as a result of this in other communities. And it provides, it has a health risk and provides a false sense of security and protection from the elements. And we saw that these approaches are mostly used in warmer climates. An important one that we saw from all communities is that it requires an organization to provide governance and leadership in actually operating such a facility. And lastly, it attracts other homeless individuals from other communities who are searching for that type of solution. Next slide. Now I'm going to move on to rental assistance. And this is a very important topic in our community right now. And the Boulder County Courts have confirmed that they will not handle new eviction cases and has issued an order staying all warrants until the end of May. The city is working closely with housing partners to understand the scope and supports available to ensure housing stability in the midst of this public health crisis. I'll be speaking about the impacts of the current crisis on renters and landlords. We don't really know the true magnitude of the scope of the rents until we hit the 1st of April and then as we go through the month of April. However, we've heard from BHP, they're anticipating this month a $200,000 shortfall in rent. And they're anticipating that this could be covered through the federal stimulus checks and expanded unemployment supports to help with that loss. But needs remain in the community beyond BHP partners as well. Housing Human Services has convened a housing supports group, including Boulder, Longmont, and Boulder County and our housing authorities. The city is also coordinating with the Boulder Area Realtors Association. And they've made a commitment to helping landlords and vendor members with their tenants that they support. Our regional group is working to understand the resources from the state and federal level and how to best deploy and leverage those resources. As for prioritizing resources, we want to tap the federal and state resources and their supports to the housing authorities, the cities and counties through CDBG, as well as the emergency services grant. The stimulus checks and unemployment benefits as well. We're working hard to preserve our unrestricted funds, both local and philanthropic funds to serve those that are not able to have access to federal and state assistance. The work has also included understanding the population's need and supporting how to provide them with assistance that they need, including our housing authorities, as well as those with vouchers and underrepresented individuals in our community. What assistance they need and what it is, what's the most efficient way to get that assistance to them. These conversations are currently underway. Finally, rental assistance will be provided through the existing infrastructure of family resource centers like EFA and the housing authorities. Any approach around rental assistance would take into consideration the financial constraints and the needs of the renters and the property owners. I would urge, as this is a public forum, I would urge everyone in the supply chain of housing to do what they can. If they are a renter, I would encourage them to pay their rent and do everything possible to pay their rent. If they're a property owner or a landlord, I would encourage them to work with their tenants and reduce the rent as much as needed based on the needs of the tenants. And as Housing and Human Services, we'll do all we can to coordinate the federal, state, and local resources to our community. Next slide.
Kurt, sorry to interrupt. Bob has a question.
Hey Kurt, thanks for that. Before you move off that slide, you mentioned family resources through EFA. Before we move off that slide, you mentioned family resources through EFA. And I know EFA has had a program for a few years called Keep Families Housed, which the city has funded, that provides rental or mortgage assistance to families with children. Has funding for that increased, or is there a proposal to increase funding for that particular program?
Yes, I'll actually get to that a little bit in the next couple of slides as well. However, the answer is yes. We've advanced them funds that they were going to get later in the year. So instead of getting, you know, their second trench, they're getting actually much earlier. And then through the coordination with our funding collaborative, we're looking at additional funds that not just EFA may need, but other organizations as well. But I'll describe that a little bit more over the next two slides, which will also be the end of my presentation.
Thanks. Great. Mark, can you wait to the end, or do you want to ask a question now? Mark Wallach?
Yeah, I wanted to ask a question on the previous slide, if I could. First, Kurt, thank you very much for this presentation. It's terrific. With respect to the coordination between cities and housing authorities, do you have a sense of the timing as to when some of this will result in formal policies, such as standards for triaging? Or when the navigating assistance from federal, state, and local authorities will actually result in some form of cash flow? What is your sense of the timing of all of this?
So the Funding Collaborative meets on a daily basis. And also to address Bob's question a little bit, in fact, there's a letter that went out a few minutes ago from the Funding Collaborative that I'll forward to you in the morning. But $1.5 million has gone out over the last week or week and a half thus far from the Funding Collaborative. Our anticipation is probably sometime next week or later next week, we'll have a lot more information about the timing of the flow of funds.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Next slide. See, yeah, there we go. Thank you, Chris. So city staff is coordinating daily with the Boulder County Funding Collaborative, as I just mentioned, to ensure a coordinated and strategic, sustainable approach to distributing the resources to support housing stability, but also food, security, childcare assistance, behavioral, and physical health services. So it's not just around rent. The city, as well as the collaborative, is using a tiered investment approach with criteria to prioritize our resource decision-making in coordination with partner agencies providing critical community support. The city has expediated existing contract payments, as I've just mentioned. Four agencies have asked for and appreciated receiving their funding early. Most others are assessing their budgets currently. Our HHS staff are routinely and directly in touch with our local organizations. Our next existing contract scopes will be adjusted, if necessary, to reprogram existing funds to support COVID-19-related actions. Finally, we will allocate additional funding as available prioritizing critical COVID-19 direct services. However, we're really looking to coordinate federal and state funding first to understand what those holes are that need to be met through local funding. Next slide. So our department works in many ways to reach out to the community to understand the needs. This includes coordinated outreach to individuals and family clients. So Chris, this slide actually got in there. I think I want to go to the next slide. Thank you. That's perfect. So we're reaching out to various individuals within our community, in our grantees and other community partners, who in turn provide the services to our community. We have been and will continue to focus much of our attention on community members who are Spanish-speaking, including monolingual, Spanish-speaking community members, to make sure they have the information they need for these services. This has been done through the translation of all information, as well as reaching out to bilingual reporters and through our neighborhood liaison staff at the city. We're using cultural brokers within the communities to reach out to those individuals, as well as we've been reaching out specifically to the mobile home communities. That is the end of my presentation. I'm open to questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. That was a very thorough presentation. I have one question. Over the last week or so, we've gotten briefings about what's in the CARES package that just got passed. I do know that there's community block grant increases in there, and I think they may use slightly different criteria than what folks are used to, and that's through HUD. And so if you wanted to speak a little bit to when you think, if you have any idea of when those applications might be open, I think they're first come, first served. But then also, are there any other pots of money that you expect to be coming forward due to the COVID crisis?
Yes, there are. So the other thing that I can say is through our collaborations, we're working together on some of these applications to be more effective. So for example, the Boulder Housing Partners is collaborating with Boulder County Housing Authority and the Longmont Housing Authority to make joint applications to be more effective and to leverage more funds. I believe there was about $2 million, let me see here. Yeah, it's about $2 million, I believe, that BHP is anticipating for some of this support. We're going to know more about this in the next few days, but that group is actually working on those applications and understanding the criteria that you mentioned and how that fits within our community needs. But I anticipate that either later this week or certainly by the middle of next week, we're going to have a lot more information about that.
Great. Well, if you could keep us up to date, the briefing that I received through one of the mayors, the National Mayors Organization, was that there was $2 billion for state and local HUD, which is traditional. And then there was a billion that was going to be run through the states itself, and then another $2 billion that was going to be state and level, but there would be COVID factors associated with that COVID impact factors. So as you learn that, if you could share it with us, that would be great, just because I think budgeting is going to be one of our big challenges going forward, and anything that we feel like we have a shot at, the better we know.
Absolutely.
Thanks. So I've, and then Mary had colloquied, what is the difference in criteria? I think it's one of those buckets that has the COVID part. Do you know of any other criteria difference?
Let me send that out tomorrow. I do recall some of them, but not right now.
Okay, very good. And then I've got Adam and Junie.
Hey Kurt, if people are looking to donate in the community for things to go towards housing and food issues at this time, can you just clarify what probably the best resources are at this point? Is it just EFA, Bridge House? You know, what are your suggestions?
I would have two suggestions. I would support the organization that you have the connection or, you know, emotional tie to that you volunteered at, maybe in the past. There's a lot of them in our organization that are doing this type of work right now. However, the community foundation is part of the Funding Collaborative, and they're acting as a place for donations to both go and be distributed in more of a coordinated fashion. So sometimes what happens in emergencies like this is some organizations are much better at fundraising than others, but that's not necessarily a relationship to the need of the organization, as well as the community that they're serving. And that's part of the purpose of the Funding Collaborative, in having the community foundation as part of that, to be a participant in really looking at the overall needs of the community.
Thank you, Kurt.
Great. Junie?
Hi Kurt, I have two questions, and I have for Jane, and then one for Kurt. I don't know, it was on the previous presentation that Jane just gave. So how do you want me to go about that?
Why don't you go for it? We'll see if you can answer it.
So, well, is Jane, okay, let me ask you your question first, because you, my first question to you, because we talked last week, and I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I want to ask you again, because you've just talked about support to people who are renting, and we talked about the mediation services that the city provided. And I went online and I saw all the links for the county, and I didn't see the link for the city. And I was wondering, because we talked about it last week, and I was wondering how come it's not up there as well with the county? Because I think that can be quite confusing to people to know, okay, the county services are all there, but our mediation services are not up there.
Well, maybe I can address that before Jane. I know on the COVID, on the city's COVID websites, the mediation services are up there. Are you referring to the county website?
No, actually, I went to our city's website, and maybe I must have looked in the wrong place, because I was looking and I saw the counties, all the counties' information, and I couldn't find or own a mediation services link. So if you said it's up there, it's up there, and thank you so much for this, for this feedback and letting me know. And I wanted to ask you another question, and that's not for Jane, that's for you, because you talked about safe parking. And, you know, I am one of the proponent of the parking, but I'm so worried right now because of COVID. And I wanted you to, I know we're going to talk about that later. Do you know how many of our community members are living in their car? And do we have the infrastructure because of COVID to, let's say, provide proper sanitation? Because I would not want it to be a situation where, instead of providing better services to people, we end up hurting instead of helping.
So I'm not aware of the sanitary services that we would have to support parking. And I know when we, when council looked at this three and a half years ago, I believe it was more focused on camping, but it still had the same requirement for providing sanitary services. And I know it was, there was a few pieces of land that could, maybe potentially could have worked, but there's certainly no ideal sites. But any site that we looked at at that time, three and a half years ago, required infrastructure services to be installed. The other thing that I'll mention, you know, related to that, and there's also been a lot of conversation in the community about this. So the portable, you know, bathrooms throughout the community, the service providers for that, for the city, are having a difficult time maintaining the ones that are already in place in Boulder and the surrounding community. They're focusing their sanitizer on supporting medical facilities. The, I know that our portable toilets are not serviced as often as they're supposed to, because they do have capacity issues. They're really not rolling out new facilities at this time.
Yes, and I think my last question was for Jane. I wanted to know with the presentation of Director Jeff, he talked about he might be able, or he will be able to update us when it comes to the breakdowns? And I wanted to know if it would be possible, because we do get those daily updates, and I'm very grateful for them, and they are very insightful and helpful. But I was wondering if that breakdown could also be provided on Channel Eight or the phone update, and also on our website?
Yeah, so as soon as we get that, we'll certainly provide it to council in the daily updates, and we can put it on the website. And I will also ask Patrick if there are other media that would be appropriate to put that information on.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there more questions for Kurt?
Yeah, Mark Wallach.
Kurt, has there been any special consideration or analysis been given to our manufactured home communities, since if they face eviction, they're facing the loss of their main asset in life? So their situation is perhaps a little different than others? And we thought through any particular supports we might give to that community?
So one of our staff members, Crystal Londer, has been specifically reaching out to the mobile home community, as well as our cultural brokers. So a number of the individuals who live in the mobile home communities are Spanish-speaking, so we've used our cultural brokers to get the information out there about what services are available to them, things like EFA, or where they can get food, or assistance with approaching healthcare, information that we would have on our website. We're getting out to the mobile home communities through our cultural brokers. There was also a flyer that went out this afternoon to some of the communities, which, both in English and Spanish, which gave an overview with the contacts of the various organizations that would be beneficial to them, to help them through this.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Mary, I think, okay, so Mary says, could we get that flyer?
Yes, I will send it to you, maybe even during the call, after I get off here.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Great. So the next is Yvette Bowden, who is Assistant City Manager and Community Vitality Director, will address the great work she's been doing with our business partners. Yvette?
Good evening, Council, and thank you for that, Jane. Can you all hear me? I hope. So we can go to the next slide. Thanks, Chris. Last week, I introduced you all to the fact that we've been working with many outstanding economic vitality partners in the region. In the past week, I just wanted to point out, it's been a very hectic week. Since council last met, federal government passed the first, the next COVID aid package, that $2.2 trillion package that the mayor referred to, and it's called the CARES Act. We've been very busy in coordination around that, and are now meeting more than once a week. The city is providing the facilitation and coordination, as well as administration of those meetings, in three subcommittees: Outreach and Organization, Development and Resource Provision and Prioritization, and then Communications and Marketing. We can go to the next slide. Very quickly, in the past week, and I'm going to speak a little bit more about this, we've been focused on that federal funding package, tracking and coordination. The SBA debrief and review of what I'll refer to in a couple of minutes regarding paycheck protection plan, sorry for that, it says payroll, but it's really paycheck protection program and the application process. We are working with banking criteria for the lending institutions through SBA, and developing assistance resources to help people get through what we already are aware are complicated application processes. We want to make this as simple as we can for the community and for business owners of all sizes and across all industries, and we are working across all partners to get that done. I also want to let council know that the city itself owns several properties that have commercial tenants. And over the past week, in coordination with Community Vitality, FAM, and Parks and Recreation, we've reached out and offered to delay rental payments and spread those out, a payment plan for our commercial tenants in all of our properties, and that was very well received. I mentioned last week that there are free webinars being hosted by the Small Business Development Center. We've had over, and I really want to congratulate our partner on this, over close to 400 series registrations, and in the first session, there were almost 300 attendees. There'll be two more sessions, and we're still working on content together. There may be a change to the last one, that we really want to work on more of these applications. And so And so, um, that is important to stay in touch with. All of the links I'm talking about are on the city's website. Kurt mentioned the fundraising that the Community Foundation is, uh, working on with the Funders Network for Safety Net nonprofit organizations, and they are actively fundraising. Um, they have already issued 14, uh, grants under that program and are currently under review for the next set. We continue to promote ongoing business support, uh, everything from takeout meals that are still available to the importance of right now, community members, uh, supporting gift certificate purchases and the like. Significant outreach in the past week and a half to restaurateurs. The CBB with the hotel and hospitality industry, which I'm sure you're aware, um, is significantly impacted as well and the chamber. And of course, ongoing coordination with the governor's office and congressional offices and the county. We can go to the next slide. So there are two very important updates and council may already be aware of this, but we wanted to make the community aware of this and particularly businesses. There are two early opportunities under this CARES package that people need to know about. One has an open application right now and one is coming very shortly. These are two separate applications. You cannot apply for them with one application. Under the Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program, there is now something called the IDLE Advance. So at the bottom of the EIDL application that's available through the city's website and the SBA website, there is a prompt that asks if you need an advance. That provides $10,000 for qualifying small businesses, including qualifying nonprofits. It does not require the applicant to ultimately accept the loan if approved. This is very important because this is an existing program that people can apply for today that are cash based, um, for very, very small businesses. All the city links and information about who qualifies, the application process is all there. But we did want to pass along that you don't have to actually accept the debt loan if you're approved. But this qualifying 10K is very important because if you're denied, it turns into a grant. Very important for small businesses to know that. The second is coming very fast and was mentioned before in a payroll protection plan loan. These are loans. Um, they're an avenue for what we call larger small employers, let's say around 500 or beyond 500. This is outside of what, uh, the idle loans have been calling small businesses. The applications could be open later this week, but we're safely saying within the next week. It will be processed through SBA active lending institutions. We've had a lot of calls today, uh, to the Small Business Development Center and our offices regarding a list of those lending institutions. Please know that the SBDC, um, the Chamber, all of our partners will be getting this information as soon as we can. What we are recommending at this point is that people, um, or organizations and businesses of all sizes should be checking with their own, um, banking, uh, institution right now and asking them whether or not they plan to participate in these payroll protection plan loan programs. That will help them kind of understand how, and kind of get in the queue, uh, for assistance. We know that these processes can be very challenging for businesses. I wanted to point out a couple of things that are not on my slide, but, uh, just show the extra effort of some of our partners. Uh, SBDC, they have added additional capacity and the city is helping to support that. And, um, three of the 12 people that Sharon has on her team are Spanish speaking. We are working to, um, look for and see if we can get additional assistance. And the city and Chamber and SBDC hope to be working over the next, uh, week or so to perhaps provide a video or something that people can click on to walk them through the application process. Next slide. Last week, uh, council was also interested in, I think it was council member Wallach on really understanding the true scale of the economic impact, not just perceptions of the impact, but what is actually happening in the businesses. In response to that, staff has been working with our partners and, and frankly colleagues in at least four other departments, which we appreciate greatly. On 20 questions that we are prepared to issue in the morning to all registered business holders in Boulder. Last week they received a letter, um, from myself and on behalf of all of our partners, letting them know that this was coming and letting, and reminding all of them of the city's website and all our partner websites that are available to them. Tomorrow morning or sometime during the day, this, uh, survey will be going out in English and Spanish. There are four inquiry areas, general information about the business, financial impacts, worker impacts, and future dependencies. And what we mean by that is a couple of questions that help us gauge, which we're doing with the planning department as well. If this goes on for two months, what does that mean to your business? If it goes on for more than that, what does that mean to your business? And really getting a feel for the true amount of workers impacted, businesses into temporary closure or the like and what that means. This is, they're, this will be partnered with, um, all of our partners doing coordinated outreach. So once we hit send, all of our partners will then go out with similar notice to their memberships to say, you just got an email, please fill this out. Um, all of the responses will be confidential and will be reported to council, um, as part of the study session on April 28th. Um, we do not know obviously what our rate of return will be. This is a purely online application. Uh, but we are hopeful that we'll get a lot of attention for this. It's critical information in responding to council's earlier questions and helping, um, not only the city, but all of our partners appreciate how we can be of the best assistance.
Yvette, sorry to interrupt. Mark has a comment.
Sure.
Yvette, I just wanted to thank you for doing this. I think that's really critical information and will help guide us, uh, going forward. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Next slide. So I, I know you're anxious to hear more from my colleagues Cheryl and Katie, but before you do, I just wanted to tell you what we'll be doing next and remind everyone of the Business Resources webpage. Uh, again, on April 28th, as part of your, um, study session on the local economic impact, you will get a report on the business impacts with the aggregated results. We will continue to monitor and align with all federal, state and peer community initiatives. Um, there is ongoing effort to communicate safe operation and safe practices. We know there have been a lot of emails about that. And so we're doing what we can, um, through our partners as well to remind people that are operating under the order, how to do so safely respecting social distancing. We are connecting businesses and workers to all currently available assistance programs. I did want to also mention, it's not on this slide, but last week, um, I believe council members got a notice about how many, um, commercial landlords, um, you know, properties were, uh, under that resolution that they proposed and suggested. And I just wanted to let you know, there have been 97 additional properties added to that list over the past week. Most, uh, many of which are in the Flatiron Industrial area. So I know you had interest in that. I just wanted to share that. And finally, uh, we want to make sure that as these things are released, people are remembering that there are continuing packages, um, the next round being considered in Washington. Uh, we are all participating in those calls and updating all of our webpages regularly. The idle application is open now. There is a link, um, so that advanced application is on the city's Business Resources webpage. The other application we anticipate, um, after these conversations with the lenders will be available within the next couple of days or a week. And exploring provision of virtual coaching. Obviously these applications are complicated and we want to make sure that people have as much resources as possible in navigating that process. Again, at the bottom here is a link to the city's webpage. I do want to point out that if you take off the last portion of that Business Resources, you'll get to the city's broader webpage with resources for the entire community. And with that, I think that's my last slide. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Young has a question.
Thank you, Yvette. Appreciate everything that you've done. Um, I'm sure it has been exhausting. So thank you very much. I have a question with respect to the idle, um, loan, that $10,000 max loan. Is that, that $10,000, is that to be used exclusively on business related, um, expenses?
So it's actually pretty complicated and I don't want to leave people with the impression that it's only a $10,000 loan. The amount you can get for the loan is actually far more comprehensive. Um, and it does have a broader, uh, spectrum than has been shared before. The whole listing of qualifications and an FAQ is on our webpage. The portion that I mentioned is the advanced portion. And this really does behave, especially if you're declined, more like a grant, uh, that does not have to be repaid. So the reason we want people to be aware of that is we know it is a loan application. However, if you are declined, let's say your business is, um, uh, does not, you know, you know, it, it does apply further than, uh, what people have been used to in the past. I have some notes here from the SBDC. I'm just going to refer to that. So you do have a much larger area available to you. What we are, um, if you're denied in the idle loan, then the 10,000 advance becomes a grant. So I just wanted to point that out. Did I answer your question, Mary?
So if it turns into a grant, that means that it can be used on whatever the needs are of the individual who gets it.
True, but I think in the loan application process, I want to be very careful. This is all unfolding very rapidly and each application is quite complicated. I would encourage that people look at the uses that are actually listed on the FAQ on the city's website and the SBA website.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there other questions for Yvette?
I don't see any here.
Okay, okay, great. Well, so now we're on, thanks, Yvette.
Thank you, Yvette.
Appreciate it. Onto the financial update and let me introduce Cheryl Patelli, our Chief Financial Officer, and Katie Doling, our Executive Budget Officer. I think Katie was going to go first.
I am.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jane. Uh, Chris, you can go to the next slide. So good evening. Um, we're going to start tonight off with some economic impacts of COVID-19. From a global perspective, um, although we don't have recent historical comparisons, when understanding the economic implications, China's early experience can provide us some valuable insight. So in January and February, when China was reaching the height of its outbreak, retail sales fell more than 20%. And we actually anticipate the US will have a sharper fall than China since the service industry comprises nearly 20% more of the US GDP than in China. At a national level, you know, we've seen in recent weeks, record 3.3 million Americans file unemployment claims, the highest record, um, in history. Major financial institutions such as Goldman Sachs, UBS and the Deutsche Bank have provided economic forecasts, but you can see on the slide that they are a wide range of anticipated impacts. And then also, as Yvette mentioned last week, the Senate, um, reached an agreement for the third COVID relief package that would inject nearly $2 trillion into the US economy. More the state and local level, although Boulder was largely spared from the economics of the Great Recession, we predict that the current situation will be significantly different. So we mean by that is that Boulder's primary businesses are in small retail shops, restaurants and bars, all of which have been forced to partially close or fully close. And we don't have a community where we have a big box stores that may be seeing increase in traffic. Moreover, the loss of 30,000 students who are traditionally in town until May and the loss of, um, 50 to 60,000 in commuters will compound the effects of COVID-related shutdowns. And we project further deflate our sales tax revenue. Next slide. So we wanted to recognize that while sales and use tax will surely see a significant decline, there are other sources, um, such as development related fees or taxes, charges for service. So this is our parks and rec fees, our court fines, our parking revenue will be impacted as well as accommodations, um, or admission taxes. These revenues, um, combined are roughly 70% of our overall revenue when you exclude utilities. And while we don't anticipate seeing, uh, any impact in 2020 for property tax or occupation taxes, we're certainly, um, cognizant that the 2021 budget may be affected by property taxes and values of homes. So before diving into assumptions, um, as you've heard from a lot of the speakers tonight, it's really important that we're expressing that because of the uniqueness of this crisis and because of the timing and it's early on, it has been really incredibly difficult for us to project impacts. And so tonight, we're really hoping to provide initial data points, recognizing that each day changes the projections and really, um, gathering your questions tonight to, um, provide more in-depth analysis for the April 28th, uh, study session. Next slide. So we looked at three different scenarios. While scenario one's likely too optimistic, it was important to kind of demonstrate the effect of what just two months of significant declines occur. So we projected some of our major revenue sources to be anywhere between 50 and 80% down in March and April. It assumes that by kind of May-June timeframe, we're back on the track of, um, 2019 revenues. But again, um, it's important that the average of this range is probably between not five and not, oh, five and nine percent, but really overall 8.1% down in major revenue sources, even in the most optimistic scenario. Scenario two builds on scenario one. Um, it has a slightly significant decline in May, so really kind of three more months versus two months with a slower recovery, but getting back towards our 2019 revenue projections, uh, in the third quarter of the year. Overall, um, again, the range is between eight and 16%, but the average is around, uh, minus 13 and a half percent in major revenue sources. Scenario three, um, and it's also to point out, this may not be the worst scenario. We could run 100 of them, but we just picked this one as a starting point. Has significant declines for those three months, March through May, and then a slow recovery, but that we still are looking at, um, year-over-year declines in a lot of the, uh, major revenue sources to the tune of five to 10%. Again, um, range is about 11 to 20% decline, uh, average is 17.1%. This does include increases in certain sectors. So we do know that there's been some, you know, stocking up effect within the retail sales tax categories. And then also when we get to some of the projection numbers, I wanted to note that we've worked closely with the, um, CBB to understand hotel trends, kind of based upon the experience in China. And you'll see that the assumptions vary a little bit, um, from these scenarios when you look at hotel specific trending. Next slide. So lots of numbers on this chart, but I think, um, what's important to know here is this is really a subset of all revenues. There's certainly others that'll be affected. Important to know that even in the scenarios, retail sales tax, or retail, yeah, sales tax, um, is pretty significantly hit. Even in the best scenario, it'd be down 6%, um, ranging all the way up to 11% in kind of our scenario three. Use tax is really hard to predict. As many of you know, we set a pretty conservative base budget for that. So what scenario one says is that we meet our base budget, but that, um, in scenario two or three, we actually dip below that base budget. Worked closely with parks and recreation to understand what the closures look like, um, in their recreation centers and their programs and services. Again, arranged anywhere between a million dollars and $2 million. Important to note here that the Recreation Activity Fund is solely reliant on these fees or general fund support. And so it's really important that, um, they start to figure out ways to reduce expenses to manage that fund. Another important factor is parking meters and fines. So as you can imagine, with shops closed, we also won't see, um, people parking and so enforcement's decreased as well as just the meter revenue and the garage revenue. Court fines, while a small amount, it is important to note that, you know, because we don't have any tickets being issued right now and court isn't in session, that there is revenue loss for that and that goes directly to the general fund. For accommodations tax, so again, you'll notice the change between scenario one and scenario three isn't that significant compared to the other revenue sources. So in working with Mary Ann Mahoney and her team, um, it really, when an impact hits the hotel industry, it really takes it a very long time to recover from it, both in terms of room rates, um, but also room occupancy. So these are the numbers that they. terms of room rates, but also room occupancy. So these are the numbers that they support and anticipate based upon the experience they saw in China. They worked with seeing how long it took from the first diagnosed case until the first kind of turnaround of occupancy rates, which I believe was about 100 days, and modeled some of their scenarios after that. Again, this is another general fund revenue. And then industry earnings is kind of based upon some experience that we have as well, kind of a wide range, but this hits all funds. Next slide, please, Chris. So all of those revenues kind of translate into some impact by fund. You'll notice on here, a lot of them are sales and use tax-related, just because that is a big hit to our revenue source. Again, a subset of funds compared to a subset of revenues. It really shows order of magnitude here for any of those funds. In the first scenario, being between 4% and 9%. I will note here that transportation is going to be hit significantly more, because not only are they largely reliant on sales and use tax, but they also have the highway users tax or the gas tax, which is being significantly impacted. So they are definitely going to see a big hit. And you guys could just run through those numbers, but obviously, a lot of sales and use tax funds that are needing to start to have conversations around what to do, not only in 2020, but in 2021, which is where I will shift over to Cheryl.
Thank you, Katie. Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Chris, would you mind advancing? Thank you. So tonight, in the next few slides, I'm going to talk about the types of strategies that we are considering to help us get through this challenging time. And we really see it as a mix of strategies. We don't think there's one strategy alone that will help us through this downturn. And certainly, this is what we have now. We're still working on this, and there will be more to come. The first, we're going to talk about our sources of, sources of funds or revenue. And the first two, use of emergency reserves and use of the 2019 excess fund balance. I'll get to in the next couple of slides. We talked tonight about the CARES Act, and again, more information will come in the coming weeks about that, as well as the April 28 study session. Chris, would you? Thank you. So this slide, our first strategy, which is of course a one-time strategy, is looking at our reserves. And we've talked about our reserves a lot over the years. And just so you know, the Government Finance Officers Association and Standard and Poor's both recommend as a minimum reserve level, 16%. And then they say, depending on your vulnerabilities, you should go up from there. So for example, the fact that we are prone to fires, floods, those types of things, would dictate that we should have something more than 16%. So right now, we have our major funds on this slide. We have what the current emergency, or current reserve level is. The general fund, as you know, is at 19.5%. But you'll notice that some of our funds aren't even at the minimum 16% that I talked about, and that has been something that we've been working on over the past several years to get these reserve levels to increase. The, so we also, the second column gives you what that percentage equates to in dollars. And the third column is if we were to use the strategy of reducing our reserves to 15%, how much one-time money would that equate to? And why we think 15%, that we shouldn't go below 15%, there's really a few different reasons for that. Number one, we still are prone to natural disasters here in Boulder. We also, at this point, don't know how long this period of downturn is going to last. If you saw one of Katie's slides, most recent, people are saying this could take two to three years to recover. So we, we feel at this time to go much lower than 15 would be a pretty dangerous thing to do. So if we use the fourth column, if we do use our reserves and we bring them down to the 15%, those funds that were able to do that, you will see, if we're using the third scenario that Katie provided, which we actually think is a likely scenario, it certainly can be better, it can be worse, but we feel it's fairly likely, given what we've heard, we're still have a pretty significant shortfall in all of our funds. Chris, could you advance? Thank you. So that's the first source, is bringing our reserves down. The second source that we are looking at of funds that we could use to help us through this downturn is our excess revenue that we had in 2019. So luckily, 2019 was a good year, especially as it relates to our sales and use taxes. And what this chart shows is the amount that we were actually over our budgeted amount in these different types of revenue. I think what's really important to point out as well on this chart is the large percentage of revenue that we get from retail sales tax. And Katie talked about the fact that that's one area that's going to be hit really hard during this crisis. And interestingly enough, yes, grocery stores over the first few weeks of the pandemic were up a lot. I just read an article that, for the first time since the pandemic started, Walmart, Costco, and Target in the third week of March were actually down from last year. So it is something that we are monitoring, and we will be giving you more information when we come back in April. Next slide. So this takes the same information about our 2019 excess fund balance or excess revenues and breaks it out by fund. And we wanted to show you, we were over in sales and use tax in the general fund, but we actually were under budget in property tax. So the net effect is about 3.9 million. Next slide. And what this chart does, it takes, using both of those two sources I just spoke about, bringing reserves down to 15%, using all of the excess revenue from 2019, we totaled that in the third column. And as you can still see in the fourth column, if we just use our third scenario, we still are going to be below budget, or I'm sorry, we still will be, have a gap that we need to fill. So that brings us to our next slide, which is-
Cheryl, sorry to interrupt.
Oh, no problem.
I just wanted to make sure that the previous slide was the scenario three.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So then the other side of the coin that we always need to look at in a situation like this is expenditures, and how can we manage our and reduce expenditures. So we made a quick decision, so far, a one-time 2020 reduction of costs by imposing a hiring hold on standard nonessential employees. That, I believe, went into place a couple weeks ago. So we have a lot of vacancies, and those that we are considering nonessential we're just not going to fill for now, and see how this plays out. We certainly know we have key positions in essential positions that we will be continuing to fill throughout the year. And then we are exploring several other things as we move forward. One-time money, we're evaluating the need for seasonal temp employees. So this time of year, we hire hundreds of seasonal employees, and we are looking at the types of employees we hire. So for instance, if someone is a landscape maintenance employee, we are still going to need that service. It really is an essential service for us. But there are a lot of other employees who are tied to programs that may not be happening, and we need to be evaluating how we're going to handle those seasonal employees. We're also reviewing capital and operating projects, and looking for projects that could be delayed either later or perhaps next year and beyond. So we've asked departments to come up with lists of both capital and some operating projects that they feel they may be able to delay. We're exploring additional one-time budget reductions for 2020. These, this can be various things. I've heard other communities are looking at travel, training. We really need to be careful on the types of reductions that we are suggesting. So at this point, we don't have anything solid on that, but we are looking at different types of things that we can do to help save money during this crisis. And then the COVID-related expenses. So not only do we have the downturn in revenue, but we're going to have additional expenses related to COVID. We hope many of those will get reimbursed through the CARE Act. We don't know yet. So we, of course, no matter, even if they do get reimbursed, the city has to upfront the cost. So we're making sure that we quantify these expenses and come up with a funding strategy to cover those, hopefully just in the short term. And then, as we look ahead, like I mentioned, the varying forecast of this economic contraction, we are looking at ongoing budget and service reductions, both in 2021 and certainly during the, I'm sorry, both in 2020, but also during the 2021 budget preparation. So we'll be working with the different departments on these areas as well. Chris? Thank you. And I'm going to turn it over to Katie to finish us up with next steps.
So lots of information tonight. Again, we fortunately had already prepared for our April 28 study session. These are all the topics we're hoping to hit on and love to hear thoughts about it, or additional items you'd like to see us look at, again, in no particular order. But by April 28, we should have more information on our March sales and use tax remittance that we can share with council. We'll hopefully know by then, in addition to some hiring holds, what other budget actions we've taken for 2020, preview into 2021 budget development and what it really looks like per fund for potential reductions. We also hope to present this Budgeting for Community Resilience, which is a grant that the finance team, in conjunction with a lot of departments and our innovation team, worked on, that can hopefully help us start to align with what our essential services are, and come up with a mechanism for really evaluating our programs, especially in light of reductions. Then, as many of you guys know, we have been doing Phase One of the Financial Strategy Study Committee. They will be coming forward with some of their recommendations. And as Yvette mentioned just a second ago, we will be providing the results of that Business Impact Survey. So that is what Cheryl and I had for tonight, and we're happy to take questions, many of which we may need to punt for April 28.
So I have, oh, thank you for that, both Cheryl and Katie. This was quite useful, very important, and timely. There are two questions. We have one from Aaron and one from me.
Yeah, thanks so much. That was extremely helpful. And I just wanted to sort of place that information, frame it a little bit. So you're talking about how we might make up shortfalls, but right now, you're just, you're presenting rough scenarios, correct? I mean, there's no plan to start shifting funds around or spending reserves or things like that. You're just giving us a kind of an outline over what things might look like. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, Cheryl, see, yeah.
And so when might, when might we start making those decisions? I guess the April 28 is our next significant check-in point. Is that when we're going to talk a little bit more about next financial steps?
That's exactly right. And, you know, should we come upon information somewhere in between there that signifies that we need to make drastic or quicker decisions? I think certainly we'll have opportunities for each council, but at this time, without really knowing much about January, February, or March sales or tax remittance, it's kind of a shoot-in-the-dark right now, with some, you know, fairly reasonable estimates just of initial impacts for one or two months. But we will need to be taking actions, and the sooner we do it, the better.
Great, thanks for that. And I, just one comment I'll make on it, is that, like, you presented, you know, how much reserves we might spend or not spend. And I think when the time comes, it's really going to be a judgment call based on what services we're looking at losing, or what additional support we want to offer to community members in need, right? So those, those will be the trade-offs that we'll have to make when the time comes, and it'll be very much not an abstract conversation about numbers, and very much a concrete conversation about what are we losing or what could we gain? Thank you.
Great. So my question is, the, the funding from the CARES grant that's going to local funding in Colorado is going to come through the governor's office, you know, four counties that were above $500,000 in population can apply direct to the feds. Bless you. The other monies will flow through the governor's office. So who are our contacts at the governor's office to try and figure out what will be covered and what won't? Can we pre-spend and be backfilled? You know, some of the mountain communities have started supporting their local businesses, and I don't think we're on the point of being able to do that right now, because we don't know what would be covered and what wouldn't be covered. And so I guess my, my real question is, who and how are we in contact with so that we can learn that as soon as we can? Because to Aaron's point, we might, if we knew for sure that we would be covered with certain rental support programs or business support programs that were separate from the money flowing through the Small Business Administration, we might want to think about that. And so how are you finding out what the state is going to do?
So I'm going to jump in just quickly. I was in contact with Kevin Bommer today of the Colorado Municipal League, and Kevin and his colleagues at Colorado Counties, Inc. are working really tightly with the governor's office and with the state to figure out how they are going to divide the money. The thing that, that you said, Sam, and that we need to put an emphasis on, is that there are four large counties that are guaranteed to get dollars, but no other county and no other city is guaranteed to get anything. The state is the one that is going to decide whether or not the state keeps all the money, whether or not they share it with the counties, and then whether or not cities will get anything. So it's going to be a bit of a long road before we know anything. What Kevin told me today is that the state has been silent on this right now. I think they're probably scrambling to try to figure out how to make decisions around this. And so it's not going to happen in the very near future. So I just want to caution the council about making early decisions before we know if we're going to get money and what we would get backfilled for. Also, a thing that's important to know is that I believe the CARES money is focused on COVID-related expenses. And, and as you pointed out, we don't know if our giving grants or rental payments would be considered COVID-related expenses, or if it's going to be things instead, like setting up the COVID Recovery Center. So we have to be careful about that, and I appreciate your question.
Great, thank you. I just want to put it in the context for council, because I probably haven't had a chance to share it this way. But the, you know, the CARES package itself is a $2 trillion-ish package, and the part that we're talking about is the local support, so local support. The four counties in Colorado that are above 500,000 people can apply direct for support to the federal government, and those four counties are Denver, Adams, El Paso, and, oh, sorry, Rappo, not Adams, Denver, Adams, Jefferson, and El Paso. Outside of those four counties, and they can apply for up to $1 billion in funding directly. So they're capped under the CARES Act at $1 billion. But Colorado will get $2.2 billion. But that $1 billion the four counties can apply for, up to that cap, takes away from the 2.2 billion. So the amount of remaining money, should the four counties max out their federal dollars, would be 1.2 billion that would go to the state. And what Jane says is true, they do not have to share that with counties and cities. But just so council hears kind of the scope that we're talking about right now, I had not realized until this week that the number that the four counties could receive was up to $1 billion. It had been spoken to me that it was a much smaller number. So it's perhaps even half of what's coming from CARES to local governments in Colorado. So we have other questions. Mary, and then Bob, and then Adam?
Yeah, thank you for all those presentations. My question is about the very first slide that Katie presented that showed the three scenarios.
Chris, are you going to go back to it or do you want to? Okay.
I think that was it, yes. I want to make sure that I understand the percentages in the second, in the, in the second and the third bullet points in some of the scenarios. So I understand the 50% to 80% in declines. And then, then there's the minus 8.1, minus 13.5, and the minus 17.1. Am I understanding that those percentages are the ones that, the percentage down that we would be for the whole budget, the whole operating budget?
Yeah, so those take in those major revenue sources that I, you know, highlighted on prior slides around sales tax, accommodations tax. So again, not all revenues, but on our major revenues, based upon some early indications predictions, when you compound those all together, year over year, we would be down 8.1% in those revenue sources or 13.5.
Okay, great. And then in the, in scenario three, you have that 5% to 10%. So what does that 5% to 10% mean?
So that means, you know, after May, so unlike the other two scenarios where we get back up to 2019 revenues, maybe not an increase over there, this, that means that for June through December, we still see declines of revenues year over year, anywhere between 5% and 10%, somewhat indicating a recession at that point.
So for the entire year, not for just that half of the year or that few months after this is, this first phase of what we're going through is over?
Correct, for the rest of the year.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood. Thank you for it.
And then Adam had a follow-up on Mary's question. Oh, hold it. No, he said it was answered. Bob?
Yeah, I guess my question's probably more of a comment. So this is a great presentation. We really appreciate you guys pulling this together quickly. And presumably, as April progresses, you're going to learn more or your assumptions will become more refined, and the news will either get better or worse. And I guess I want to invite Katie and Cheryl to, to check back in with council before the 28th of April, if you've got different information to share. Well, I guess we'll just operate under, under these assumptions for the time being. But I wouldn't, I guess what I'm saying is I wouldn't wait until April 28th to share new information, especially if it gets worse. And I guess my second comment would be to Jane. Jane, if you need to do something, and I'm just speaking for myself, other council members can agree or disagree, if you need to do something as far as changing services, reducing services, making other adjustments on the, on, on operations before the 28th of April, I don't want you to feel constrained against doing that. I don't want to put a, put a date out there of the 28th of April, and all decisions will have to wait until then. So I guess I would just, speaking for myself, would say that I want to make sure that Jane feels empowered to make whatever adjustments in services she needs to, even before council meets on the 28th.
Thank you.
Any other counsel? Mark Wallach has a question.
Yeah. Have you taken a look at essentially what would be a scenario four in which we are in full-out recession for the remainder of the year? One investment bank is now projecting unemployment of 15% in the second quarter, and I don't know that that would result in even slow recovery for the remainder of the year. And so I guess I'm asking if you've taken a look at, at an even more difficult scenario?
We haven't. The way the model's set up, it's fairly easy-ish. I think what we wanted to do is just put out some information for ranges and then work towards it. I will say, from an unemployment standpoint, Boulder tends to fare slightly better than state or national averages, so that's certainly a factor to consider, too.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to raise the subject.
Yep. Yeah, like Cheryl said, we know this may not be the worst thing. This may eventually be ideal.
Yes, well, on that cheerful note.
Yeah.
I think I will thank you for your presentation and turn it back over to Jane.
So thanks, Sam. On the agenda, this was the COVID briefing that we intended to provide. And so my belief is that we're ready to go on to the next item on the agenda, and then later in the evening, you are going to come back and make further questions or discussions about other items. Is that correct?
I believe so. I mean, the way we have it in our agenda is work plan discussion and then other response discussion. And I have some sub-buckets I'll propose here. And then we'll ask council, do you want to make any more appointments? Yes or no? And then there can be a few minutes at the very end, whatever time that happens to be, discussion of future council meetings and study sessions, and then open comment.
Right.
Does that sound right?
It does.
Okay. So staff doesn't have anything for the work plan discussion or any of those? Do you have the bullet points we had talked about before? Or should we just go ahead?
So Lynette would be the one, I understand, to have the bullet points, or maybe it's Chris that we can put up on the work plan.
Yeah, let me work on pulling up those.
Thanks, Chris.
Great. Well, Chris, will you pull that up? I'm going to say that it's been another hour and a half or a little more. So why don't we take a three or four-minute break? Everybody walk around. Chris will get this pulled up, and we'll come back at like 10 till or so. Does that sound good? Thank you. See you in a minute. Invite everyone to do, staff and council alike, is these meetings are new for us, right? They're virtual, and so they have a different kind of rhythm to them. Typically during a council meeting, council members and staff can get up and go take a break when they need to, and that's a little harder here in the sense that there's no television playing in the break room, so you can see what's going on and so on and so forth. So I would take suggestions from people about how they would like to see these run. I'm experimenting this time with short breaks, pretty short, three minutes between the different segments. But if there are other ideas people have, I'm all ears because this is all new to us. So with that, Chris, if you want to at least walk us through your, your questions about the work plan, and we can talk about that.
Yeah, I don't think Chris needs to be the leader of it. He, I just didn't want him to pull the sign up. So on to the next slide, Chris. Is there another slide? Yeah. So what CAC did on Monday is we went through the council agendas for the next about five or six weeks. And we know that there are a couple of items that were on the agendas most recently, but that CAC thought were not important based upon the comments that council made last week. So here are a list of those. So the first one is the Docless Bike Share Licensing Program. We do need to extend that or take an action on it no later than July 21st, but obviously that's several months away, so we can wait. The OSMP land management recommendations, including prairie dog management, we are hoping that we could bring this back to council in the third quarter. So we can talk about whether or not that's soon enough or, or not soon enough, we'll see. Then the criminal code changes regarding obstruction. You're going to see on a consent agenda item, the criminal code changes that were proposed, but there's one part about obstructing a police officer that we've taken out of there, and we aren't bringing forward because it really isn't a consent agenda item. So we'll bring those back at some point in the future. Then, of course, you've been talking a lot about the library services, including possibly the creation of a library district. And that had originally been scheduled for March 17th and May 5th. The CAC has taken it off completely, and so that's one that remains unscheduled. Then you've been talking about initiative petitions, and tentatively, CAC put that on for April 14th. And then 20 is plenty is one that we'd like to bring to the Transportation Advisory Board for their recommendation about how to proceed, and then bring that recommendation to council on April 21st. So those items are the pending items that we've got on the agendas. And I don't know if we want to talk about those right now or just sort of go through the rest of the meetings. But, but once we pass this particular slide, it's just sort of meeting after meeting. So I am at your disposal about how you want to handle this discussion.
So my input is, I'm glad you highlighted this to us. So these are the, the questions that we need to, to look into. I will have one question. I know that the criminal code comes up under consent. So we're not going to see prairie dog management on the future agendas, correct? Is that off completely?
It will be off, but then we'll be bringing it back as we start filling up the agendas for the third quarter, so.
Okay, so that second bullet is informational to us.
Yeah.
We will see the third bullet in a consent agenda.
Except for.
Except for the obstruction, right? But the rest of what, what you're hoping to get done, so we'll see that one.
Could I add that we're also going to take out the parking thing? I had forgotten that you had, there was a 72-hour parking exemption for trailers, and then the council had made a decision on which way to go on that. So we're just going to, we'll bring that back later as well.
Thank you, Tom. And then on library services, that is gone now, correct? So if we, if council wants to keep it, at the moment, it's just not on a future agenda. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's right. That's what CAC asked for.
Yeah, no, that's right. And then initiative petitions, is that currently still scheduled for April 14th?
Yes, you added it, not you, but CAC added it for that meeting because of the situation with the virus and people not being able to get in-person signatures.
Got it. So we'll see that. And then 20 is plenty for April 21st. We will see that as well. So the only thing I'm trying to flag here on these bullets is something we won't see at a future item. So Bob has a correction on library, and then Aaron would like to speak.
Yeah, I think on, on library, there were actually two meetings, one which, which was already passed, and obviously we didn't take it up because we were right in the middle of the ramp up for this. But then there's also, I believe, a placeholder we'll get to, I think it was on May 5th, I'm doing this from memory, for a possible public hearing on the library district. So I think we will, we will actually get to a discussion on the library when we get, if we get that far into the calendar.
Okay, very good. But.
I don't think so, actually. I think that at CAC, you asked us to remove the library from May 5th, and we've done that, and you'll see that as we go through.
Okay.
And instead, we're wondering what we want to do about Marpa House and Hill Hotel, which were also on May 5th.
Thanks for that clarification, Jane.
Great. And just so council knows what I'm trying to do here is I'm trying to flag things on this slide that are not going to come up if we go through meeting by meeting. And so that will be prairie dogs and library services. Everything else we'll see. And I go over here, we've got Aaron and then Adam.
So thanks for all that. I think that, that generally all looks good. I just want to say that on the library, I don't think it's something that we should be taking up in the next couple of months. I'm perfectly happy to see that, but just want to reserve the option to bring it back up, you know, say in the summer, perhaps, when things settle out a little bit.
Great. Adam and then Mary.
Yeah. So in CAC, we discussed what we're looking for, or what staff specifically was looking for in the 20 is plenty, April 21st meeting. And I was wondering if we could get that clarification, just so everyone on council knows what we're going for there.
And, and Adam, I appreciate that, but I think we'll see it as we go through the calendar going forward.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
We can cover that right there. Mary?
Just unmuteing myself here. So to a certain extent, you mentioned the Marpa House and the Hill Hotel. And so my question about the Hill Hotel, that's for the concept plan review, right?
Yes, it's, at the last meeting, you called it up.
And, okay, so I just want to be clear that that's what the, the Hill Hotel was. And then Marpa House, that would have, that was scheduled for a hearing, wasn't it?
Yeah, a couple of months ago, and then it went into remission. I don't know what else to say. And we were trying to figure out whether or not it needs to come back. And Chris Messjuk may have more information about Marpa House when we get there.
Okay. So just a thought that I had, and I'll put it out there so others can be thinking about this, is that there may be quite a bit of community input on both of those, both the Marpa House and the Hill Hotel. And we may want to just have some tentative plans based on how the public input process goes on April 7th. So just putting that out there.
Yep. And we will, we will see them as we go through the calendar. So the, the things I would ask, if council has comments or concerns about either prairie dogs or the library district, you won't see them again in the ensuing conversation. So speak now about those because they won't come up again.
So I do have just a comment on the prairie dogs. We do want to get through that this year, and that'll be the goal. Just want to be clear on that. Trying to bring it back in the fall, correct?
Yes. Yeah, we're, the dates that we are looking at right now are at the end of September, which is the end of the third quarter. That should give us enough time to have the conversation, and then that would also give staff the ability to start the work, whatever you decided they should be doing in 2021.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I guess we move on to the next slide.
Okay, so here is April 7th. What we have assumed is that the very first thing on all of these agendas would be the COVID-19 briefing. And we've been speaking with Jeff Zaich and Rob Visser, and they are interested in continuing to come to our meetings, and they're, it's very gracious of them. The next item that we put on there is open comment, and you have not yet decided to do open comment. It was actually a conversation to have later this evening, but we wanted to show this evening. But we wanted to show you where it would fit into the agenda. And it works better for us with regard to the public participation and the technology that we're using to have it come at this point, as instead of before the COVID briefing. Then we have a few consent agenda items.
Thanks, Jane. If I could interrupt briefly.
Oh, sure.
CAC tentatively decided that we would do open comment the first and third, just our normal meetings, and not the second and fourth. So that's what you'll see reflected here, that that's not a final decision in any way.
Right. Okay, so we've got a couple of consent agenda items. One of them is the extension of the Oil and Gas Moratorium, which we think is not controversial. The second reading of the emergency extension of the Electric Scooter Moratorium, which you passed on first reading last week. We have one public hearing. And we know that this isn't the most important thing that council is doing. But we wanted to have a public hearing so that we can test out our technology. And so that will be a good test drive for for public participation, as well as open comment will. And then finally, we have, for a long time, scheduled the citywide retail strategy review on this meeting. What CAC requested is that it be a very short presentation, really supported by a memo, and that, in fact, on April 28, when a vet is bringing back the business survey results, that that will definitely inform the future of the citywide retail strategy. So we think that it's still relevant now. And we want to give you an update on it, but it will not be a long discussion. And so that's what CAC decided for April 7.
And I have a suggestion here. I don't think we said it explicitly. But just as we have a COVID-19 briefing at the beginning of each meeting with questions, perhaps under matters for mayor and city council, we should have a COVID-19 discussion. And we can tee up what is part of that discussion based on what we learn, what's going on. But maybe it's worth having a placeholder there. If the answer is, we don't need to say anything, then we just don't bring it up. But it might be worth just noting that. Does council, if anyone in council disagrees, let me know. So Mary asks, what kind of discussion do you envision? Well, I think it will change based on what we've learned in the previous weeks. Some things that it might envision are, how are we doing with cases versus beds? How, you know, how is Boulder tracking versus the state as far as the numbers go? We will have that information from the briefing. But what does that mean to us? And then I think what the big discussion will be for a long time here is going to be around what we learn about the CARES Act, what we learn about other acts that are moving forward potentially. And, you know, how are we doing relative to things like practices, best practices? So we'll get into it later, as we have what I think will be a similar discussion tonight, but things like how are practices on construction sites and commercial kitchens and so on and so forth. So we can, CAC, with the input of council, can talk about each week what that will look like. But I think there will be subjects that will occupy us for the next month. And Bob has a suggestion.
I think there's all good things to talk about, Sam. And of course, there's things that we don't, we don't know today that we will want to talk about. My only suggestion would be rather than doing that at the very end of the meeting, that will feel a little unnatural, is we do it towards the beginning, either immediately after the briefing, while when we can react to what we're hearing from the experts, or or maybe after open comment. But I would do it at the beginning and save our business towards the last.
That's fine. I mean, I think that's a good point. Maybe after open comment is better.
Okay, so I think we can maybe go on to the next slide, if you're okay with April 7. So this was going to be a study session, but now it's a special meeting. So we'll start off with our briefing. And then everything else was put under matters from the city manager. So they'll, what CAC requested is that each of these items be very short. So the first one is the Google Service Eligibility Calculator. This is the software that Google, in partnership with the city and many departments in the city, has been helping us prepare so that folks who are in search of the typical kinds of aid that the city passes out would be able to find out if they're eligible for it. We want to tell you about it. I don't think we're launching it right away because IT is busy working on COVID and other responses. But that will be coming. And so there's going to be a report that a vet will prepare. I'll talk about it for two minutes is what CAC requested. And then we'll move on to the next one, which is the Community Benefit Phase Two Code Change Project. So this is one that staff was seeking input on next steps from city council. CAC was requesting that it be a short item. We do have the capacity for staff to make a presentation and to have a conversation about it with the council. So you need to help us decide how much you want on that one. Then there'll be a very short update on Planning and Development Services and what's been happening in that area of the city in the last few months. And then this was the COVID response discussion that we could move forward, if you'd like us to do that. So this meeting could be pretty short.
Sam, I think you're muted.
Good reminder. So I think for 2A, there's going to be a memo. And this will just be a pointer to the memo with a brief, what's the subject. And on 2C, there will be a memo that we're going to, so both of those are, we're treating them, I think essentially like IPs. And then what you're asking council tonight is, do we want to be to be somewhat substantial, or just a few minutes and then a memo?
Right.
Okay, Aaron?
Yeah, thanks. So I wanted to agree with that idea of moving the 2D, the COVID response discussion up to after the briefing. It seems to, like, if we start each meeting with our COVID items altogether, that makes a lot of sense to me. And then I would just say to go on the shorter side on these things, the other matters.
Mary?
So I would just like to understand the purpose of putting these as, well, A, the Eligibility Calculator and the Update on Planning and Development Services, of putting them as matters rather than just leaving them as an IP that we read.
So my understanding is they're essentially IPs. And this is just a two minute, here's what's going to be in the IP. Don't forget to read it. So it was a little, many IPs come and go by, and not all of us get to them. I'm guilty of that. This is something that would otherwise have been an item that we would address. But because of COVID, we're moving it off. So if you think we should handle it a different way, that would be fine.
So what you're saying is, is it's just, hey, you're going to get a memo, read it?
Or you've got a memo, and here's what it's going to be about, and read it and send any questions over email.
Okay, as long as we keep it to that, I think that's fine.
Yeah, I think A and C, we're definitely going to keep to that. And the question is, is there anyone on council who wants B to be more substantial? Hearing none, I think we'll stick with that two minute, five minute, two minute thing that we set at CAC and move D up to A.
Great. Okay, on to the next one. So this would be a regular meeting. We would have the briefing. We'll move the COVID discussion up before open comment, then we'll have open comment. Here, we got, we have the second reading of the Criminal Code and the Oil and Gas Moratorium Extension. Then we don't have any public hearings that evening. But under matters from the city manager, we have the 20 is Plenty discussion. And then, of course, the COVID would have moved up. And then under matters from the mayor members of council, we were going to return with a work plan and upcoming council meeting discussion as we look forward into May and June, and then calling special meetings for the study sessions in May and possibly for June 9s.
So Jane, quick comment. I want to check in with council to make sure I understood. I believe that we were going to do the COVID-19 response discussion after open comment.
Right.
Get the briefing and then the comment, and then we discuss.
Yep, we can move that up.
This is Lynette. Doesn't that get in the way of our open phone line with our vendor that we're using? Didn't we want to keep that phone line open as short of a time as possible?
Right. So what we're going to do is move 5B. It will now be 1B.
Right. Okay.
And then we'll, yeah.
That's my understanding. Thanks.
I'm confused a little bit. I thought it was going to come between 2 and 3.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was gonna, yeah.
So I want, I want council to weigh in. I agreed with Bob when he suggested that we get the briefing. We do open comment. So you can open the phone line after the briefing, have open comment, close the phone line, and then put in the COVID-19 response discussion, only because that lets us hear from the public.
Okay, I just misunderstood. I'm sorry.
There's an additional cost for that. We pay by the hour for the phone line. So if you leave it, no matter when you, it's the time is charged from when you start and when you finish it. So staff was recommending that you put the public hearings and the consent agenda together, so there'd just be one span of time when the line would be available.
Public hearing and the, sorry, I'm saying again, Tom, the public hearing and the consent together?
Yeah. So the public, if the public hearing follows the consent, the time that we have to pay for the moderator to be there is shorter. So if you open the phone line and close it and put something in between, the time that the city will have to pay for that service will be longer, so it'll be more expensive.
Great. I've got Mary and Aaron.
So does the, moving that COVID response discussion, moving that away from the briefing, does that preclude questions to Jeff Ziyak and to Dr. Visser?
No, no. You would still do the briefing as we've been doing it. So anybody that was making a presentation, you could ask questions to. I think the response discussion is to talk about things that have come up during the week that you have other questions about that we haven't somehow answered.
Okay, okay, just wanted to be clear on that. And my other question is, how expensive is that service?
I don't want to quote a figure. I, I know that Sarah.
I don't remember. We're paying by the hour.
Oh, okay.
But is it $1,000 an hour? Is it $100?
No, it's in the hundreds of dollars.
Okay, Aaron? And then, actually, before we go, Aaron, Sarah can answer the costs. Sarah?
Good evening, council. This is Sarah Huntley, Engagement Manager. The cost for our contract depends on the services we execute in the contract. But what we're talking about here is an inbound phone call number with a screener from BroadNet. That's a minimum cost of $750 a meeting. If we talk about having video streaming or other features that we need to add, the costs go up significantly.
$750 an hour, a meeting, or just a flat fee?
Well, you've negotiated with them to do the first couple of meetings on a pilot basis, where they will be a little bit cheaper. But their actual regular rate is $750 for 60 minutes.
Okay, thank you.
That's with their screener. As we get more comfortable with it, it's possible that a city staff person would be able to play the role of both staff moderator and screener, which could bring that cost down a little bit.
Great. Aaron has a comment. And then Rachel has a question. So Aaron?
Well, maybe I'll just ask Rachel's question, since she wrote it. Is it $750 per hour, Sarah? So the second hour would also be 750?
No, it's not a full $750 difference for the second hour. There's a per hour extra cost that's associated. And I don't recall exactly what that is.
So it goes up?
I'm sorry?
This is Mary. So it goes up after the first hour?
After the first hour, there would be additional costs, but it's not, it's not $750 extra each hour. Okay.
So you have to get back to us on that. I guess partly, it would matter exactly how much that is. But I do still like the idea of keeping all the COVID things together at the beginning of the meeting. And and so I would, I would vote for doing those together and then going to open comment.
I'm good with that. Does anyone object? Okay, very good. Then, then 5B becomes 1B.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions about this meeting? Okay, on to the next one. So April 28 is the one we've all been waiting for. We will be doing the financial update and the committee report. And I think Katie went through all of the sub topics that we will do that night. And we could also do a COVID response discussion that night. I don't think we're going to have a briefing that night. I'm not sure we have enough time to do that. But I think as we get closer, we'll know a little bit more about what, what we need to do for that meeting.
Any comments, anyone? Okay, silence means dissent in this case.
Okay, on to May 5. Okay, so May 5, we have on the consent agenda, the first reading of the first adjustment to the base budget. And certainly, this is going to be of interest to council based on the financial information that Katie presented today and that we'll hear about on April 28. Right now, we don't know what that looks like, but this is the normal time that we would do that. So we're going to keep that on because it is an important item. Then, under public hearings, we have the possibility of Marpa House and the Hill Hotel. And the items may both be postponed, depending on the situation. Chris sent me some information about the Marpa House, which makes me think that we're not, we're still not quite sure if they need to pursue landmarking. Some of the issues that had been brought up before have been resolved. But they may need, they're not going to expand the building at all. So that's a positive development. But they might need tax credits. And if they do, I think it needs to be landmarked, is the understanding that I have from what Chris sent me. And then the Hill Hotel is the concept plan. And we do need to get to that because it has been called up. And although we have the ability to delay these matters, we probably don't want to delay this for too long of a period. So this is one where we need input on what you'd like to do that night.
So Adam, you have a question?
Yeah, this isn't in particular to this meeting. I just have a question about scheduling in general. So I can wait until after, toward the end of this conversation.
Okay, very good. I would just observe that there's no COVID briefing or COVID discussion. Was that intentional because you don't think we'll have time?
It was intentional because we are hopeful that as we get to the end of April, that having a briefing at every meeting won't be necessary. We don't know how often it would be necessary, probably maybe every other meeting. But we, you know, we can't predict what that will be.
Okay, I would just observe for council that this looks like an actual normal meeting. So if we don't have COVID to add here, I don't understand why we wouldn't be able to get through this meeting. Any council feedback? Because otherwise, CAC will just monitor. Okay, Aaron says, okay.
This is Bob. I'll just jump in. If Marpa House is not resolved and it's contentious, and we anticipate a lot of community members coming out, and we do the Hill Hotel concept review, I can see this being a kind of a lengthy meeting. So I kind of agree with you, Sam. I would like to keep the Hill Hotel on for sure, and get through concept review, which will probably take us an hour and a half or two hours. which will probably take us an hour and a half or two hours. But I'm not sure we can do both of them if Marpa House is a big deal, which it may not be.
Okay, and then I've got Mark with a question, and Mary with a question, and Erin says we may need a briefing still at this point. I agree with that, Erin, and we will monitor CAC and take your input. Mark?
Well, that was my question. I assume we have the flexibility to reinsert a COVID briefing if needed.
I think we do.
Oh, yeah. I mean, this can change week to week, so, yeah.
I hope you're right.
Mary, question?
Well, I'm wondering about the Hill Hotel, because it is a hotel. And I'm just wondering what the state of things will be and financing for hotels. So I'm just wondering, do we want to just monitor this one and maybe put it off?
So I'm gonna jump in here. I mean, I think your point is well taken, but it needs to be the applicant who kind of withdraws and says, hey, the financing isn't gonna work for us anymore, and we don't want to move forward. At this point, they've submitted their concept review, we've called it up, and so I think we have an obligation to go through with the hearing. We, we don't have to do it on May 5th. We could do it later because we're under emergency orders and we can change the timing of it, but I think that just putting it completely on the back burner would not be the right thing to do.
Yeah, that, I, I thank you for that. I, I understand. I'm just wondering, I guess it could be a pilot, but I'm just wondering how doing a concept plan in a virtual meeting may play out, but I guess we can try it. It's just such a kind of interactive visual kind of thing, but.
Good point.
Okay, so Rachel has a question that's general. I have her on the stack with Adam. Then Yvette Bowden says they will try and get an update and keep CAC informed. I assume that that's about the concept Hill Hotel, yep. And then Mark agrees with Mary as far as should we be thinking about hotels right now. Bob says let's ask the applicant. I think, Bob, why don't you just tell us what you want to ask the applicant here?
Well, it was basically what Yvette said. So let's, let's not assume anything one way or the other. We may reach out to the applicant, and they may tell us exactly what Mary is speculating, which is maybe they don't want to go forward as quickly. It'll, it'd just be good to know. I mean, if they still want to go forward, we, we reserve the prerogative to decide the timing, but, but let's ask them because they may, this problem could go away.
Thanks, Bob. I appreciate that. I think, I think that's what we should do.
Okay, so we'll stay nimble on this meeting based on what we learn from the different applicants for those two public hearings. Is that okay?
I think it's okay. I would just observe that if we don't have a ton of COVID discussion, so a COVID briefing and a short COVID discussion, there's room here to do something. And whether we want to do something that's related to COVID, or we want to do something that addresses, you know, some of our backlog, I, I think we should, council should track CAC to make sure that CAC isn't going off into the weeds, but we may try and keep something on going forward. So, Bob has a suggestion.
Well, I guess as a suggestion or comment, one of the things that was originally on this meeting, and I was wrong, Jane corrected me, that I, I thought, I didn't realize the library had come off of May, the library district had come off of May 5th. I feel a little uncomfortable just having the library district disappear. I don't know what our decision will be, but I want our decision to be intentional in light of the circumstances. And so I'd like to schedule it somewhere in here so we can tell the library champions and the community which way we're heading. And people may or may not like that answer, but I, I do think that we need to have a discussion about it at some point in time.
Great. Well, as Mary said, leave it to CAC, and I'll get to Mary's comment in a second. I, I think that maybe what we do here is we somehow put it under one of the matters, under the maybe postponed rubric, because I think what we're trying to do is signal that it could happen or could not happen. So Mary? Mary Young, you may be muted.
Sorry, I keep forgetting. I think the library district is similar to, we may land on that, similar to where we landed on the Hill Hotel, which is, why don't we ask the library champions how they feel about this? Because in a way, it's, it's sort of in, by then, we will have had our April 28th discussion about the budget, and we also have to remain cognizant that, you know, what could happen, one of the things that could happen with the library district is a taxing question, and that may not be the most brilliant thing to do in November. So maybe we want to ask the library district, or the library champions.
Great, and I think Rachel and Bob concur with that. And then Erin, you had a comment?
Yeah, oh, I, I agree with that as well. I mean, I talked to them actually not that long ago, and I don't want to represent them because I might get it wrong, but I, I think they would like the concept to not go away entirely this year, but they don't feel it needs to be brought up right away. So, and which, and so my comment earlier about, you know, maybe talking about it in the summer, I think works probably with that. But by all means, we should reach out.
Great. Katie, do we have more?
I don't know. Yeah, okay, so now that we're getting out like six weeks, it's a little bit iffy, but we had planned to have a local power municipalization update, and then council input on the 2020 community survey. So this meeting looks like it could be open. I think the council input is a short conversation, and the municipalization update would normally be about 90 minutes. So we may have some openings on this meeting to add something.
Great. Adam has a comment.
So we didn't even get to this point in CAC, if I'm remembering correct. So this is all, not even CAC discussed.
That's right. That's right. The, the reason that we're going this far is because of the next meeting, which was, can you just put up the May 12? Yeah. So this meeting originally had on it the CU South decisions based upon input from the community as well as the three boards that were going to review it. At the process committee meeting last week, it was decided to move this, to move that discussion out a month. So we wanted to show that on May 19th, we're no longer demonstrating or showing the CU South, South Boulder Creek flood issue. That's now going to be on June 16th. So this is another meeting where we've got some time. And again, we may be having COVID briefings this whole time, but we're hoping that we can go down to only two a month at this point.
So just a comment, as a member of, of the subcommittee, and Rachel can chime in, a lot of that month delay was driven by staff's necessity to look at critical functions and to focus on, on public works issues in kind of an emergency response mode. And so the delay of a month roughly is driven by the fact that staff hasn't been able to do the work, but they will be able to get to do the work, and then we'll be able to run it past all three boards, and we have a schedule for that laid out. It's not complete yet, but we can bring that back to council. But Rachel, do you have any comments?
Yeah, no, I would agree. It was a staff request that they needed another month to do outreach and engagement and discussions with boards. And I would just add, I thought we were more making a recommendation to move it to June than that we had made a decision at the subcommittee. So I would say that was the subcommittee recommendation.
Yeah, and then followed by CAC, we took that and we laid it out this way. So if council has any, any concerns with this, let us know.
Okay, and I don't know if we show more meetings. Chris, is there another one? Yeah, so May 26th, we've got ballot items. We always bring forward ballot items this time of year. And then we, we're going to talk about minimum wage scoping. Just looking at those two items, ballot items, obviously, the charter committee has already had some meetings, and I think we'd have time to bring that back. The minimum wage scoping, I am pretty sure we will not have the capacity to bring that back to you at this time, because this was work that was going to be done by Community Vitality, and as you know well, Yvette and her team have been 100% focused on business relations as a result of the virus. So I, I think that one is probably gonna need to go away, just until later in the year.
Great, Mary has a question.
So, yeah, on the previous meeting, but you don't have to go back to the slide. Is the Business Improvement District passing that, doesn't that mean creating a taxing district up in North Boulder?
Yeah, it does. And I saw that on the last slide as well, and I thought to myself, I wonder if they're gonna want to go forward. They had hoped to go a year ago, and then it got delayed. So that's another one we need to check on.
Yeah, yeah, just to make sure they still want to do that.
Right, right.
Okay, so it seems like we're through, but there were two general questions. I have Adam and then Rachel.
Yeah, so the things that I'm not seeing anywhere here are what steps council might want to take to address funding shortfalls, inequality issues that might stem from the economic impacts. So I, I sent a couple ideas, and I know other people have ideas as well, so I just want to see, since some of these meetings are short, if we can at least start those discussions in the near term, just so they're not put off until, you know, for too long, essentially.
So Adam, on the items that you brought up, what we could do is on, at CAC on Monday, we, we can add those to, you know, how at the beginning, we go through scheduling items, we can add that there, and CAC can discuss those and decide when and if to put those on the agenda.
So Adam, could you, Mary requests, could you remind us of the items that you're referencing?
Sure. One was a new funding source, and that would be a head tax on primarily public companies, companies that are publicly traded. The other was a potential to put a prohibition, so a two-year prohibition on home sizes over 4,100 square feet, to avoid people buying cheaper houses in the economic downturn, and then turning around and making them much bigger and more expensive than they were previously. So those were the two items that I brought up.
So may I comment on at least one of those? I'd say yes.
I'm happy to have your comment. Sam doesn't seem to be speaking, so.
Oh, so I, you know, so as far as the, as far as the, the head tax, again, you know, a theme is arising with me. I mean, are we sure that a tax at this point in time would be something that we'd want to bring forward? So I just wanted to put that out there. And yeah, that's all.
And I'll just quickly respond. The reason why it has publicly traded companies is they don't tend to be large, so we're avoiding a lot of small businesses. And since a lot of them are tech-based, they have a lot of work for home policies, things along those lines that have helped them avoid a lot of the issues that COVID has presented. So I'll just say that much.
And then Jane confirms that, Bob, on April 14th, we're gonna discuss petition initiatives. And then Junie, just for the record, says, I agree with you, Mary, we need to reconsider the economics of taxes. And Erin?
Yeah, I, I think sort of to Adam's point and Mary's and et cetera, I think that we're gonna want to be nimble this year in terms of how we respond to the crisis. And so the COVID briefings are really about what's happened this week, but I think we also need to have some willingness to rearrange our work plan and take on new initiatives to support, you know, folks who are struggling, or let go of initiatives that don't seem to be appropriate anymore. So I, you know, I'm fine with kind of the level that we're looking at it right now, because I think it's too soon to say exactly what we're gonna want to do, but I just want to get that point out there, that as we move further into this, I think we should be open to rearranging our plans, adding new things, taking things off, which is not saying necessarily endorse Adam's particular ideas, but just that idea that we, that we should, we should be rearranging things as we get further into this.
Great, and Mira by comments that she agrees with Mary as far as taxes go, and I missed Mark earlier, so Mark Wallach?
Yeah, with respect to what Adam has proposed, I'm happy to have that conversation, but I think this climate is so negative and antithetical to tax increases that it's not really a practical proposal for now. If we want to talk about it for some future time, I'm happy to have that conversation, but it's not something I think we're going to be implementing anytime in the near future. The other proposal, I think, is a more difficult question of land use policy. And again, I'm happy to have the conversation, but I'm just not sure where that's going to go. Thanks.
Okay, Adam has one last comment.
Sure, and I appreciate everyone's feedback. The reason why I want to have a robust discussion about this is to look at the whole thing rather than just make a rash judgment, simply because we are going to be lacking funding sources deeply in the future. So if we don't try to poke at some of these things and just say no to all taxes, that automatically means that we're gonna continue to have funding shortfalls. So just keep that in mind and hopefully be open to a discussion.
Mary?
Yeah, and I just, I, I appreciate that, Adam, and I appreciate you wanting to be proactive. I also want to just remind everybody that, you know, we're all in this together, and I think there's a, what I see happening out there is that everybody is trying to come together and work together, and, and let's see how that plays out. And, you know, to Erin's comment, it's really too soon to, to tell, and, and I agree, we need to be nimble, and, and I think we need to keep in mind that we're all trying to work together as a community and come up with solutions that benefit the most people that we can have benefit. Everybody's gonna be in budget shortfalls. The city is not in a unique situation. Everybody is going to be trying to figure out how to replace revenues. It's not unique to the city. So I just want us to keep that in mind, that everybody's going through the same thing. So that's what's really kind of unique about this situation. There's, there's not really winners in this situation.
So I'll follow up, Mary. One of the, the things that we talked with Congressman the Goose about, various people, and one of the things that is being discussed for the fourth stimulus package is backfilling local revenue loss. And I don't know what local means, but certainly mayors want cities, and commissioners want counties, and governors want state. And so I think there will continue to be a- And so I think there will continue to be a conversation about what's in this fourth package, what does that look like? And certainly, revenue losses is a subject that's on the table. Any other comments on the work plan? It looks like we've worked through two months ahead, which is pretty good. And obviously, CAC is going to need to keep bringing things back to council as things change. But are we good on this? If anyone has more comments, let me know. Otherwise, I think we'll call this agenda.
I was still in the queue.
Oh, I'm sorry, Rachel, I didn't see that. Apologize.
That's okay.
Oh, that's right.
Yep. I just had more of a general thought, which is, I agree that we're not in kind of business as usual mode. And I find these meetings a little bit difficult to begin with, so the shorter they are, I think, the better. But I do wonder if we could take this time to listen more. We're hearing a lot from the community in emails and phone calls. And I know some people have wanted kind of broader audience. And I understand we used to have like Science Tuesdays where we would invite some longer presentations. So I wondered if either part of our meeting could be set up as longer listening sessions or given that it sounds like cost is going to be an obstacle there, could we do some other options for community engagement with Zoom meetings or something like that? I apologize to Sarah Huntley for creating extra work if that were to happen. But could we be listening more while we are all at home and a little bit available? Thanks.
Bob?
Yeah, I agree with Rachel. And Rachel, let me make a suggestion, since you and I and Sarah are the Engagement, Community Engagement Committee, and I think we're scheduled for a meeting on Friday, if that's still, this coming Friday, if that's still on. So why don't you and Sarah and I take that offline and come back to council in a week or two with some suggestions on how we can create those listening sessions, either on Tuesday nights or in other forums.
Okay, and I'm, to Mira by asked a question, am I wanting more meetings? I would say, I wonder if we could use this meeting time to listen more, but it sounds like that maybe creates another cost. So could we do a different way? And maybe it's not all council members, but still publicly noticed because there will be enough of us. I don't know, just a thought.
Well, I mean, I'll comment. I think our Tuesday night's time is going to be fairly precious, to be honest. We'll see how COVID develops. But I do think having open listening sessions where they're noticed and any number of council members could choose to join or not. It's different than chats with council, but the Engagement Committee might think about, you know, could we do, now we don't have to go out into the community in a sense, right? We can't really do that and go into different places, but we could set aside different times and council members could make it or not as their schedule allowed. So anyway, that's for the Engagement Committee. Anything else, any other comments? Great, so Jane, any closing comments?
Nope, just this was very helpful and we will make whatever changes you brought up tonight and then go from there. So I think there's one more thing on the agenda.
There's actually two and potentially three, which we will not get to. So what, okay, so the things I see on the agenda are COVID response discussion. So there's a whole long list of buckets here that we can put forward. There's potential to do or not do the remaining boards and commissions. And then there's the discussion of future council meeting and study session schedules and open comment frequency. In my opinion, we can really probably do C pretty easily. It's only going to be, I think, a 10 or 15 minute discussion. We're done with A. And so the question is, does council want to do more board and commission appointments? And/or do we want to address COVID response tonight? So I'm looking to council to either. So Erin says, what are A and C? So the work plan discussion was item A. B was the COVID response. C was future council meetings and schedules. And then the open question is, are we done with board and commissions for tonight? Okay, so I've got, if I answered Erin's question, I've got Rachel, and Mary wants to do more board and commission, and then Adam and Mark. So Rachel?
So I think that for the community's benefit, it's more important that we tackle COVID-19 response discussion tonight. I'm happy to stay up late and do boards and commissions now that we've started them. But I think there are, there are, there's more urgency to wrapping our minds around some of the options we have and solutions that we may be able to offer for this crisis.
Then Adam, so Mary said yes on boards and commissions, then Adam and Mark.
Yeah, I'll just pretty much second what Rachel said. I'm down to do more boards and commissions, but I want to talk a little bit about response.
Great, and Mark Wallach?
Sorry, I had to unmute. I share Rachel's sentiments. I would frankly rather put off boards and commissions and focus on COVID response tonight and get to the rest of them at our earliest convenience.
Okay, Mira by.
I do agree that boards and commissions are incredibly important. So if we need to do that, I do understand, but I will say I have not stopped working since this started, so I'm pretty brain fried at this point tonight. So I'm not lasting much longer at this point.
Okay, so that sounds like we're going to talk about COVID-19. So let me tell you buckets that Bob and I had worked up just as organizational frameworks. You can tell me whether you agree with these or not. The first one was enforcement and education. So how are we making sure that people are behaving in a safe fashion? The second was changes and improvements. So above and beyond, just trying to make sure the stay at home is working well. Are there things we can do to encourage people to wear masks more or wear masks in certain work situations? And then developing best practices for different industries and distributing those, that would be changes and improvements. And then there was additional programs, which would be homeless parking and the Sanctuary City Declaration, re-declaration and cyclovia's. And then there's city finances, which I think we've actually covered pretty much tonight, but Bob can, can say if he agrees. And then there's just a heads up that economic recovery stuff is coming. And I think we actually touched on most of that. So that would leave us with enforcement and education, changes to current, and then additional. Does that sound like an okay way to frame up the COVID discussion? If anyone, okay, if anyone dislikes it, speak up now. Okay, in that case, let's jump into enforcement. I have a question for Jane to kind of tee this up. Jane, I had seen a few notes from you that highlighted that much of the health-focused enforcement around the order, the state order, is done by the county. Is that correct? Do you want to tell us a bit about that?
Yeah, I will. And I'm going to ask Carrie Weinheimer to be ready to help me. So when a person has a complaint about others violating the stay-at-home order, the thing for them to do is to go up to bouldercounty.org. And at the top of their homepage, they've got a link to a form that they can fill out that goes to the county health department. And the county health department then triages those forms and figures out if they can respond to the question, maybe it's just a question, immediately, or if they need to refer it to the police department of the local city. And hopefully, Carrie, you're on board and you can talk a bit about what happens if it comes to the police department. Are you there?
I am here. Good evening, council. It's Carrie.
Thank you, Carrie.
As Jane explained, the primary enforcement arm for the state orders is the county health department. And they do have their call center that's been stood up. And I believe their hours are now going to be 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, including at least this weekend. And I know they've handled, on Thursday, when this first began, I think they handled over 470 calls. So they're the primary enforcement arm, especially when it comes to businesses that might be violating the order. The police department is still responding to calls that might involve large public gatherings, because obviously, it's hard for public health to be able to respond to those. And I did a quick research back to Thursday morning when the order went into effect. We've had handled about 20 of those calls since Thursday morning through this evening. So that's, they've ranged from reports of people playing soccer and basketball to, you know, things like complaints about construction or landscaping, which are obviously allowed under the order. Are there additional questions I can answer?
Anyone have questions? So I have a question that's kind of in between, which is, I just received a note and I've received a couple of others about somebody observing people on playground equipment, not just one group of people, but like 40 or 50 people within the space of half an hour, playing on slides and, and, you know, being, and these are mostly young people, but being far too close to each other. And so is that something that Parks is going to work on? Is that something that the police or the health department would respond to? What advice should I give to them?
Yeah, I think that's actually a really difficult question because calling the police, the police have other things that they're doing. And so they are going to prioritize sort of emergent issues as opposed to people on playgrounds. But the Parks Department has put up signs everywhere. They're trying to be much more directive about where the signs are, but people are violating them. And it puts the city in a difficult position. We don't, I gotta say, we don't really know how to effectively get somebody out there in the moment to enforce these things because really, the police department can't be in charge of enforcing the playground social distancing. So it's an issue for us.
Great, I want to return to the playground question, but that was just the, like, more big picture, not specifically that. But does anyone else have a question for Carrie or Jane about kind of generally who to call and what the process is? Sounds like no. Okay, Mark does, great.
Under the state order, violations of the emergency order are punishable by fines, are they not?
They are.
Okay.
But we're not issuing tickets at this point. We're trying to educate people at this point.
Well, given the, sure.
If I could add to that, there is a, obviously, the first, the first approach is to try to get compliance. The health department also has the ability to enact a civil process against people who violate. And then the last and final resort would be any kind of criminal prosecution, which is a currently a class one misdemeanor.
Well, I don't think anybody wants to see a criminal prosecution, but if people are knowingly and repeatedly violating our emergency order, it seems that at some point, we're going to need to make that decision that they ought not to be jeopardizing the public's health. And then simply advising them may not be a sufficient strategy for getting compliance. And so I'm asking, is that, who else might be authorized to issue a ticket? Obviously, we don't want the police doing this.
So the, the police department are the ones authorized to issue tickets. And if they've got nothing else going on on a given day, I guess they can show up to the situation and ask people to move on. It's just that we can't guarantee that there's not something else that would be in front of that situation.
And I have a follow-up question for you, Jane. In fact, it's not follow-up, it's actually a little different. What was the theory behind accepting landscaping from the prohibition on activities and deeming it an essential service?
You would have to ask the governor.
Yeah, so can I, can I just bookmark that, Mark? Put it down here under changes because that, that I think is a, you know, the whole landscaping, small construction, renovation, all of that. I think we can return to that under changes because I think it would be an additional or a change. And, and it's an important question, but, so I'm trying to make sure Carrie can get off the line when his part is done.
I defer.
Anything else about enforcement? I have been, and Jane, tell me if this is okay, because I think other council members, okay, may have a question about this. Is it okay to forward Parks complaints to Ally Rhodes? Is it okay to do open space complaints to Dan Burke? How would you like us to handle things that we receive directly that you may not get?
So certainly, you can forward them to Ally for Parks and Dan for Open Space. If it's a question about a particular situation, like right now, two people are walking too close together on the path, then sending that to Dan won't be effective. So the only way to do that, I think, is for the person to immediately call the public health department.
Okay, so I'm thinking a little more broadly, like if there's 20 children on a playground and that's something that we don't want to see happen, taking a picture and sending it to Ally, will that be helpful to her or does she? You know, I'm just trying to get guidance. Is there any way that we should share our observations?
So while this has been going on, we've been trying to make sure that Ally and Dan can join the conversation. So Ally, are you there?
I'm here.
Oh, great.
Hi, Ally Rhodes, Director of Parks and Recreation. So our team has been monitoring the playgrounds. We have folks in the field six days a week right now doing trash removal and other essential duties in park operations. We are seeing changes in the usage. We know people are still violating. We know people are, for example, moving picnic tables to access tennis courts. So this week, the team is removing nets at tennis courts. They are, to Jane's point, placing signs more directly on equipment, removing some equipment where we can. I did a kind of exhaustive tour of the system today to see what I saw. And of the 15-ish playgrounds I drove by, I saw one kid on a swing. So I'm not saying the larger parties and things aren't happening, but I do think that they're not a widespread issue that we need to be ordering chain link fencing and fencing off playgrounds. I do think the message is happening and our team's continuing to pay attention. I got an email today from a woman concerned about behavior patterns she was seeing at her tennis court. And so tomorrow morning, the team will visit that site, take the nets down, put signs up, lock the court. So I guess the, the short answer is sure, send stuff our way and we'll continue to monitor.
Okay, great, thank you. I've got Junie and then Rachel and then, Junie said, taking pictures of children may be inappropriate. Gee, you have a comment?
Yes, I just wanted to add to, because I think our order is a little bit more, although you are required or asked to stay home, you still can go shopping, you still can go outside for fresh air. So I think it's very hard to monitor. And I'm thinking as well, I think maybe, as Jane mentioned, behavioral change is much better than penalizing people at this moment because until we have stricter directive, I just don't think that's productive. And also just, you know, penalizing members of the community we know that are currently suffering probably financially. So maybe we might reconsider that. Yeah, and again, to me, I think it's more about the behavioral change and making it possible for people to educate one another as community members without being too maybe aggressive about it, you know, like saying if you see someone walking to close with each other. But then again, it could be maybe their family members. So I think it's a bit, it's slightly challenging on how to best interact and interact in this situation.
Great, thank you. Rachel?
Yep, hi. So on the ticketing concept, it doesn't sound like per Jane we're even thinking about doing that. But I would have some concerns if we wanted to go down that road because it's, you know, if you're at a playground, it probably means that you don't have a fenced-in backyard with a trampoline, you know, built into your, into your yard and other, you know, playground equipment and things like that. So I think there's a socioeconomic inequity issue. So I think the people that we would be ticketing would not only be financially struggling from the current crisis, but also probably also have lower socioeconomic and a more challenging time getting to get their kids out. I say all that with acknowledgement that we need to be staying at home and nobody feels more strongly about that than I do. But I hope we can find a different way than ticketing. Thanks.
Great, and we ended up at the playground thing anyway. I wasn't necessarily wanting to go there, but the concern with playgrounds is not the same as parks, right? Playgrounds are multiple people using the same piece of equipment over and over with not enough staff to be able to clean it in between. So there's not a real ticketing concept here. It's just how do we keep people from doing things that are not safe for them and others? So I think you've kind of, the signs are great, you know, I've checked out the signs and they seem to be mostly effective, I agree. And it seems like the, you know, the report I got, I'll just forward on to you. I have no idea if it's true or not, but it talked about seeing 50 kids in a park over the course of an hour playing near each other, you know, on the same piece of equipment. And, and so that just, there's no perfect answer here, but that highlights the concern. It's not so much parks, it's just the use of the equipment that gathers people together, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Please do share because I do think different areas have different trends or behavior patterns based on what amenities are in the area or privately available. And so send it our way and we'll see what we can do with that site.
Great. Anyone else? So this is enforcement and education. Anyone have any comments about that high-level bucket that we're talking about? And you said Dan was here. Does Dan want to comment before we're off of this?
Sure, Sam. Dan Burke, Open Space Mountain Parks. I just want to echo a few things that Ally said. We have noticed our ranger reports from the last few days is actually indicated a reversal of what we were seeing the first couple of weeks. And in fact, I'm just reading today's report from one of our lead rangers who said, even though it was a very beautiful day, that what he was seeing was very low visitation, probably the lowest he's seen since the coronavirus situation has occurred. So what we think we might be seeing, at least from the open space perspective, is a few things coming together, which is spring break could have created a spike for us. And I don't know if that created a spike for Parks as well, but with online schooling started, spring breaks over with, the education and outreach efforts that have been going on pretty aggressively between Open Space Mountain Parks, our sister agencies, Open Space Agencies across the Front Range, our City Parks and Recs Department, I think the education is starting to take hold as well. So I don't know if I can call it a trend yet, but certainly the last couple of days, we've gotten indications from our rangers that the visitation levels and the social distancing are both getting better. But in terms of how to report things, I would say that there's three ways that we gather our information. One is we have automatic trail counters installed at 11 of our highest-use trail locations. So we are continually monitoring our trail data. Our Ranger Daily Log Reports is another significant way that we are getting feedback from what's going on in the system as well as community members reporting in. So we use all three of those ways to determine where we need to place more emphasis. And in fact, we're using those three data points, starting at the end of the week, to ramp up some very specific, site-specific education at about six of our highly visited trailheads. And we're actually going to start deploying our education and outreach staff at those trailheads as well in a, after they get some basic training and they will be in uniform. So I think there's going to be a much greater presence in our open space system in terms of helping to educate the physical distancing aspect that we're seeing some areas where there's concerns in open space.
Great, thank you. Mirabai has a comment?
Yeah, I just had a question on, I'm assuming it's possibly Parks and Recs, but who has jurisdiction over the creek at the base of the canyon? Because I came down from work today and it was, you know, a pretty decent day out and I was shocked at the amount of people down there today.
Sure. If you're talking about Ebenee G Fine Park, that area is City of Boulder Parks and Recreation and...
Further off, like where they do all the tubing and the diving and the rope swings and stuff?
I'm not aware of any current rope swings. Are you, so you're talking west of Ebenee G Fine Park?
Yeah, just a little bit. I'm talking like two, three blocks. It's where all the tubers go and people jump off rope swings in the summer. They wreck them in the summer.
Yeah, up until that, that second road, that is Parks and Recreation land, and I can have folks check out that area tomorrow and see if, so what I hear you saying is there were a lot of people and they were not practicing social distancing, the playground was in use and gatherings happening?
Well, so when you're coming down the canyon, there's, you can look down into the creek and there's, there was a rope, there is a rope swing a lot of the time. And then there's this area where they dug it out so the tubers come down and there's all this path. And there was tons of people with bikes, with, out with dogs. They were all sitting on the big rocks that were into the creek and it's right where, God, there's a parking lot across the street. I mean, you're literally the mouth of the canyon right there.
Sure. I think I know what you're talking about and maybe I can follow up with you offline or tomorrow to clarify and then follow up on the right, the right mitigation strategies for that site.
Yeah, and again, I'm just curious because I was shocked at how many people I did see out today.
Yeah.
Sam, you're on mute.
Any other comments or questions for Ally or Dan? Thank you all.
Thanks, guys.
And I think that's the end of the education and enforcement conversation. So let's move on to changes. I'll start with Mark because he had brought up landscaping. And I want to come back to landscaping, construction and so on as, as essential functions.
Yes, if you don't mind, like I got the question. So what happened is that after the city issued the emergency order last week, then Boulder County Health issued one and then the governor issued one. And what we ended up doing is the city and Boulder County, both of us went with the governor's order, the state order, as the order that's now in effect in the state of Colorado and in Boulder County and in the city of Boulder. And so in that order, the governor listed what essential services are. And among those essential services are the construction of housing, including affordable housing. And then also under that section is maintenance of buildings, essentially, I'm paraphrasing. So there were questions asked of the Health Department and I presume that they may have asked the governor as well or the public health people at the state. And the consensus among public health officials is that the way that order is listed or written, that landscaping is actually fits into the maintenance of residences part. And so it is permitted under the state order.
But as I understand, that we can make our order more restrictive if we so desire. Is that not true?
We could do that.
And I mean, I'm just failing to see the essential nature of lawn mowing.
Okay, Adam?
Yeah, I don't know if we want to tackle each one of these one at a time, but I have similar issues with some of the construction that's been going on that isn't, you know, affordable housing related or anything along those lines, where social distancing isn't being practiced. And we've seen a few examples of this over the last week or so. So I wanted to have that discussion as well as to whether or not we should be looking at better enforcement or just tightening our restrictions even further.
And this is the right place, this is the right place for that conversation. So I think we can take these one at a time. And, and I guess what I'd like to hear more broadly from council before we dive into it is do we want to have a conversation about tightening up our order beyond what the state is? Because if we say yes, then we can talk about landscaping and certain types of construction and so on. If we end up saying no, we want to do this a different way or no, we don't want to restrict it, then that's a different comment. So I'm kind of looking at this as a fork in the path. And so let's get the sense of council, do we want to potentially make the order more restrictive or not? And I'm going to read what Mirabai said, "The more we cut back, the more people who don't have jobs and will be put in a bad situation." So that's one comment. Aaron?
Well, I think there's a, there's a real value to having a consistency of orders across the state. And I think the governor has done an excellent job. He's always been like the one step ahead or one step behind us. And then when we come into alignment, I think it's working out well. So I would, I would probably stick with the governor's level of protection. But what we might consider adding in that's not like more stringent in terms of requirements would be that, that we as a city expect that all essential activities that are still conducted are done with the maximum social distancing practicable. So I think about like landscapers, you know, there's maybe a crew of three working on three areas of the site and all doing their own separate things versus two people, you know, like weeding right next to each other, something like that. So, you know, if we put out an expectation that every activity is done with the maximum extent practical, practicable, that that could be a good approach to take.
Rachel?
I agree with Aaron. I would also not make it more restrictive. And I think there's some, again, equity concerns at the industries that we would be targeting. So I'd have big concerns if we tried to tinker with that. But I like Aaron's idea of expressing that we need it to be done, you know, jobs where you might be standing closer to each other to have that done with the six feet of separation because we do want to protect the people who are doing those jobs too. Thanks.
Great. Bob?
Yeah, I'm going to concur with Aaron and Rachel, and I see others are chiming in with concurrences as well. I just think that if there are changes, if we went down the path of being more restrictive and out of sync with the state, it better be medically indicated. In other words, I don't want us, the nine of us, to impose our non-professional judgment on this topic and go down the path of restrictions. If Jeff Zayac was telling us that the governor was missing the mark and that we need to be more restrictive, I'm going to listen to that. But I don't think the nine of us should be substituting our judgment for that of our medical professionals. So I would stay aligned with the governor who presumably is receiving medical advice and only deviate from that if we get contrary medical advice.
Great. And then next I've got Mark with a comment and then Mary.
I agree with what Mirabai said about, you know, not wanting to put more people out of work. But I think we need to understand that it's got to be deeply frustrating for a lot of businesses who are deemed non-essential when people who are there to plant trees and mow the lawn are suddenly deemed essential. And there are a lot of people in town who have got to be wondering about that. And I don't really have a good explanation for them.
Mary, and then Adam?
I think that the lawn mowing and the landscaping that we're having a discussion about is, it's more perhaps like what happened with open space last week. There were all these crowds and as things, as we settle into the unsettled, people are becoming educated. So I think it's an education thing.
Adam?
So maybe this is an area where community policing is maybe something we need to do more of. Because at a lot of these instances, when you have a landscaping truck or you're at a construction site and you can see these things and you can take pictures of them and then you know specifically what the construction site is, you can probably find out what the landscaping company is on the side of the truck. Then those can be reported with evidence so that those companies can be contacted by the proper authority and, you know, warned. But I think we at least need to commit to sort of that level as a community of trying to enforce social distancing.
So I'm going to read Junie's. Junie says mowing a lawn is important as a person with allergies. I'm going to jump in here. So I've been keeping track. There's definitely not appetite for tightening the restrictions. So I want to, and I'm on that camp as well. However, there have been some pretty close, so I've observed on construction sites multiple times, construction workers within a foot or two of each other working on the same thing, whether it's lifting a pipe out of a hole or laying some kind of sheeting or, you know, where there's obviously unsafe practices going on. I mean, these, these would be things where it wouldn't matter where you were doing it or in what context or what service, they, they are violating the order in the sense that the order requires that even companies performing essential services as defined in the order have to have adequate social spacing. And so one of the things when, when one of the construction companies at Boulder Junction was showing a picture of what was going on there and I just gave it to our city staff and they're the ones that found the contractor, those contractors and the ones nearby agreed immediately that there needed to be better practices that the general contractors on those sites were performing. And so I think one thing that we need to do is kind of a partnership. You know, as Mary said, we're all in this together. Education doesn't, I mean, I think reporting these instances to staff, especially with just a little evidence, isn't going to result in a ticket. That's not the point. The point is education. And so the chamber got involved, much to their credit, as well as the developers proactively took this up. And so they halted work for one day and they designated a safety person at each site. And the safety person's job is to watch for safe behavior and then get a write-up, some plans for how to do safe behavior. You know, if you've got three guys lifting a pipe out of a hole, if that's a necessary function, then can they wear a mask, right? Can each of them have N95 masks on so they're at least protecting the other two from themselves and vice versa? And so I think there are a number of cases that, and I think we can chunk them out as we go forward, where we can just ask for more cooperation and more education rather than enforcement. So construction is one where I've personally seen a lot of, of non-social distancing behavior just because that's the way it's always been done, right? This is a change. This is a big change. It's a big change in a week. And so I think construction's one. I think what goes on in commercial kitchens is another because most commercial kitchens are, you know, set up for people to be close to each other, pretty close. And so A, do you, do you ask for the chamber and the restaurant industry to come up? And presumably, national restaurant industries are working on this. And do they come up with, you know, best practices that they can share with each other? And so I think this is a good chance to partner with the chamber to help come up with better practices and get the word out. I want to just say one more thing and then I'll be quiet, but Bob flagged this, so I'll have Bob comment. There's at least two condos in town that are having renovations done to them. I don't know exactly what the work is. I went by one of them today. And, you know, the challenge here is they're having to go into people's personal space in order to do construction work in their space. And there are people who are not very comfortable with that. And so we could have another layer of this, which is if a construction worker is going to work in someone's personal space, they at least have to have X or Y or Z as some kind of precaution. And I, I came by one of these places and I observed, you know, six construction workers standing around in a circle, probably just planning out what they were going to do, but they were all, you know, next to each other. So I, I just want to put that out there as how can we cooperate with the local industry to comply with the order, including the social distancing? Rachel?
Yep, two things. I, I really think that we should be staying in line with the state's order as much as we can because it's cleaner and I think that they have thought through it. And I agree with Bob that until we get some direction from our health advisors that, that we not go out on our own on this. And second, somebody mentioned community policing and that's a big red flag, red flag for me. I don't want it to be perceived that this council is encouraging community policing because that can lead to profiling and incidents of racism. So I'm really wary of us sending out that message.
Bob, did you have anything you wanted to say about the condo renovation issue?
No, I think you did a good job of it. I, I, I do think, and this is not legislation on our part, if, if, if there's renovation happening on a facility and that involves entry into a person's personal residence, that person should certainly have the right to deny access to that residence. And that's something they need to work out, I think, with their homeowners association or their condo or co-op board. But in these instances are probably relatively rare. But we're aware of at least two where there's work going on and that involves entry into people's homes. And, and I think we need to encourage those folks to, to exercise their rights if they don't feel comfortable with people coming into their homes.
Adam.
Yeah, just a response to Rachel. Obviously I don't want any Rachel profiling or anything along those lines. But I think it's important that the community be aware of and point out instances where people are putting others' lives at risk. So that's the distinction I would like to make.
Okay. So we flagged some things here and I, I don't know where in the city it might land to try and help the construction industry and the restaurant industry. Encourage them to, to adhere to the governor's order in the sense of social distancing. So Jane, I'll just leave that hanging in the air for you unless you want to respond now. I kind of figured this would be the way this conversation would go, where we would flag areas of concern and then hear back what staff might have to say. Jane, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, thank you. And, and certainly we will work with the chamber to see if they can help us get the word out. I did want to let you know that with regard to city construction projects, I received information from one of the members of our response team today. And this is what I heard. All our staff are working closely with the city contractors to ensure they are following the orders. In all cases, project managers have been in touch with the contractors and informed them they would be allowed to proceed with their work with the expectation that they would be following the guidelines of social distancing to protect their own workforces. City project managers and engineering technicians continue to monitor the projects from safe distances in the field and through electronic meetings and conference calls. And we know of at least one of our contractors, but this is only an example because most of them have done it, have been working hard to inform and educate their staff. So I think with regard to projects that the city is involved in, we are on, on the case.
Very good. Junie, could you go ahead and speak to the comment that you made? I'm not sure I can do it justice.
Yes, I just, because we were talking about holding companies or organizations around town accountable or whether they can hold their own employees accountable. I was wondering if we could provide them some type of a template or I mentioned social contract where they could sign, have all the employees sign something that says, you know, I will adhere to this just so that people, again, because we're trying to change behaviors and this is something new to all of us. I'm thinking that if people sign it, then maybe they'll be more aware to adjust their behaviors.
That's a good suggestion and I expect that Chris Maschek can take that to the right people on the city side. And I think the chamber is probably still following this or they'll watch the tape. And so the chamber can, can take that as a suggestion. So thank you. I believe that brings us to the end of the second bucket. So we have done enforcement, we have done changes and we've chewed over whether we wanted to follow the state order or add to it. I think that's resolved. And then the last bucket, I'll check in on two final ones that'll be quick. But the last bucket is additional programs. And the three that I have flagged are homeless parking that Rachel and others have brought up, the sanctuary city re-declaration, and then cyclovia's. I didn't see Rachel or Aaron send anything in, but on Twitter I saw both of them say that that was something they were interested in. And I think Rachel mentioned she had said so before. So Rachel, would you like to kick us off on homeless parking?
Sure. I think that Kurt already went over that tonight and it doesn't sound super feasible to change our, our parking rules right now. So it was just something that I thought we should consider, whether that was a way to help people who are possibly going to transition to homelessness, you know, have a stopgap measure there and be able to park safely in their cars and do something that was permitted. So it was just a, a return to our safe parking comment, our conversation from the retreat and to see if that could possibly be helpful for people right now.
Okay, are you satisfied that staff got back to you well enough?
Yeah, I, I, if there were appetite for the rest of this council to consider it, I'm happy to discuss, but I'm not sensing that.
Okay. Anyone last going, going, gone? Okay, we'll, we'll call that done for the night. Then the sanctuary city re-declaration.
We were looking at getting to that right before we stopped meeting in real life. And I think it's important to follow through with that, that commitment to recommit to being a sanctuary city. We have a lot of new council members and I think there's probably a lot of people in the community that are fearful to begin with. And I want to make sure that people know that it's safe to call 911 and, and that our, our, our city supports immigrants and undocumented individuals and that this is a safe sanctuary place to be.
Great. And Aaron says he agrees with that. Junie?
Yes, I, I actually agree as well with, with Rachel. And my question to you as well is, when it comes to us and the county, are we collaborating with them at all? Because I did see on the news most recently, I don't want to give out misinformation, but there was an issue with immigrants or people who are non-US citizen. They were afraid of going to the hospital and because of COVID, something happened. So I'm wondering, I agree with, you know, reconfirming. And also are we doing anything with the county?
Yeah, so last week we issued another press release, making sure that people knew that the police aren't stopping folks and that we, that people are free to go to the hospital, that there are not issues, that we're a sanctuary city. The county issued a similar release from the sheriff's department. And we talked to the county almost every single day, if not every single hour of the day on one matter or another involving the, the COVID response. So we are very much in sync with the, with the county on this issue.
Okay, good. And Mary?
Yeah, I just wanted to let everybody know that there is, and, and Jane and Kurt may be aware of this and perhaps Sarah, there's a county movement, I guess. There's Guillermo Rivera Estrada, who runs a program at the county that is called SUMA. And I forget what that stands for. But SUMA, along with philanthropies, is putting together a group of cultural brokers. And everybody's coming together and taking pieces of work. And they include putting together a spreadsheet of everything that's going on, all the resources, looking for the gaps and then putting together a plan for doing the communications and working with people that are on the ground, working with, with folks that know the folks. It's the trusted person. So there's, there's work that is happening kind of at the grassroots level with boots on the ground, with people that know the people that are affected that is going on. And I think we can renew the sanctuary city statement. But, but just know that this work is going on and it is focusing on people that, that may not have documentation and are monolingual. So it's happening. There is work going on and I just wanted to let everybody know that. I'll be on a conference call on Friday at noon. And yeah, if anybody else is interested in participating, I can make sure that you get the information.
Thank you, Mary. So I, I think in addition to doing the sanctuary city re-declaration, and I don't think that will take long in the sense that it's already drafted, so it's not a lot of staff time. We can have someone read it if they would like at one of our meetings. So it could be five minutes. I think there's another declaration that I just learned today that Mayor Hancock did in Denver that I think we should think about, which is there have been threats and assaults against people of Asian descent, whether they're actually Asian nationals or Asian Americans. And so there's a declaration of solidarity with people who are residents who may be being verbally or physically assaulted based on perceptions around the coronavirus. So Jane, I'll just forward that to you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Take a look at that. But would council be interested in, in doing that probably at the same time? Okay, it seems like there's lots of yeses here. So we will just kind of pair those together if that's okay, because they're both kind of COVID responses. And those will say, yes, we're going to do, unless I hear any objections. Hearing none, let's move on to cyclovia's. So Aaron, why don't I hand this one to you if you'd like?
Sure, thanks, Sam. Well, so, you know, cyclovia is, the concept is taking a street and using it just for non-motorized transportation on either a, you know, just for a couple hour, for a few hours or maybe more permanently. So the thought being that while auto traffic is way, way down in the city and that it might provide a way for folks to get around town more healthily. Sorry, I'm, I'm sick and I'm really tired, so I'm not expressing it very well. But, but whether there's some possibility of doing this as a regular thing or during this time of reduced automobile traffic. And I've been in contact with Hillary Griffith, who I think was the coordinator of the Green Street when we had this like, I don't know, six or eight years ago, that this was done as an annual thing for one day. And she's very interested in helping out and taking that up. So obviously, transportation needs to be focused on crisis areas. But if they do have some time available, this might be something that we could take up.
Great. Rachel, do you want to add to that?
Sure. Aaron, I, I thought you did great, even if not feeling well. I think there's a couple of transportation suggestions that we've been receiving. One, and we got a note back from Bill Cowan on why it wasn't super feasible, but was converting pedestrian push buttons to being automated so that people don't have to push them to get the walk sign. It's just the, the big button turns automated. And I understand there was a staff time and cost concern there, but I don't think we had the chance to talk through it here. And then, yeah, I think there's.
I was just going to say, I can put that down as another item if we want to talk through.
Okay, so I had just had like kind of a transportation. But yeah, that's on, on the conversion issue. I think that it, it helps with traffic calming and gives people more social distancing space options for walking. And it's something that I think we could pilot, you know, with just a, a couple streets, maybe that makes sense. And I don't know if we could get some community volunteer support to help make it happen. But I think it's, it's worth looking at.
Can I jump in on this one?
Please.
Yeah, so the, when Hillary and others were involved in the cyclovia a number of years ago, it actually took a lot of time of staff and it was expensive to get all of the barricades and to staff it and stuff like that. And so while it was really fun, it, it was abandoned because of all the effort that it took to make it successful. Now, part of it was, I'm sure that the event organizer was trying to get like yoga shops and other people to have fun activities on the closed street. But simply the closure of the street is not a top priority for us during this time. So obviously I could have our staff report back on what it would take. But it, it is more time consuming than putting up a few barricades because it can be dangerous if cars don't follow the rules. So I, I just want you to know that this is less easy than it sounds by far.
Okay, so if it's okay, Rachel, I'm going to separate your two ideas. They are both transportation. Cyclovia? Okay, Mary?
Maybe it's more of a comment. But so we just spent about half an hour talking about construction sites and people being too close together and landscapers and all that stuff. And so it sounds to me like what we're trying to create here may be something that attracts crowds. And that was what cyclovia did, you know, back in the Hillary Griffith Green Streets days. It was all about attracting people and, you know, creating kind of a fun space. So I would fear that we would be kind of doing something that would be counter to what the current condition are amenable to.
Aaron?
So Mary, those are, those are great points, but I, I think the idea of this one would be very different. I mean, that, that was a one-day event. It was an event and it was designed to attract crowds and it had vendors and it had all kinds of fun stuff. And I think the, the intention of this and, and other cities are, are doing it across the country in the world is, is to repurpose some space for cars, for, for pedestrians and bicyclists instead. And part of the idea is that it's a large enough space, like a whole road, that, that you don't need to be near people. So it's not just a bike lane, it's not just a sidewalk, but it's a wide space. And if it were done not as a one-day fun thing, but as something that was fairly regular, then, then it would not necessarily attract crowds that would overwhelm the space. So we'd have to take those into account. And I'll just say, Jane, I totally get that the, the department is busy. But maybe there could be a thought of how this could be done in the sort of minimal staff time possible way, particularly if these measures are going to stretch on for months.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So it, it sounds like we've just got comments going out. I, I would, I would just put out there that I think many of the cities where this is being done are cities that may not have our PATH network and so on and our, and the bike lanes. I mean, it sounds great, but if I were to think about 20 is plenty or vision zero kind of work, I guess, I'm going to come down on the, this is a, an idea that if we get to it, fine. I just wouldn't want to prioritize it higher than some of the, the work that we've already got going on to protect pedestrians and cyclists and so on. So anyone else want to comment on this? I have more not-go-forward comments than I do go-forward. Anyone else want to weigh in? Okay. Okay, so I, I think we're, we're to the not right now stage of the, the. Okay, so I think we're to the not right now stage of the conversation. So I don't see us going forward with this anytime soon. It would be nice, but if we do come out of it, the question would be, do we want to make it permanent? And I think there would be a whole sense of loss if we put it in and then took it away as well. Anyhow, next is, do you want to talk about the beg buttons, Rachel?
Sure, can. I think the theory is that by hitting the buttons, you are introducing another source where the pathogen can be transferred. So by eliminating the need to do that, it's just another spot that people aren't having to touch. So it's a health and safety concern. I have some question about the wanting to make sure that it's, it would be rolled out equitably if it were rolled out at all. And I understand there is some staff time, as Jane's pointing out, which is at a special premium right now, so not insensitive to that. But I think the theory is, you know, you have to hit the button as a pedestrian to get the light to change for you, and cars do not have to do that. It just automatically turns green for cars. And so we're causing people who are out and walking and biking to have to have an extra possible point of exposure. Does that make sense?
And it makes sense, yep. I have a question from Junie.
Yes, I think that's a real concern, what is brought up. I just don't know if staff can get to it in time, but I was wondering, if staff is not able to get to it in time, is it possible to switch our traffic system instead of people touching anything that it automatically allow pedestrian to cross, if that makes sense? Meaning that you don't have to touch anything, just that at certain times, it just, there's like a time for pedestrian to walk, basically. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's exactly what we're proposing, is that it would become automatic rather than something that you have to touch.
Right. Yeah, it does make sense. And the same issue would play out there as well. We have to go to every one of the signals and change them to make that happen.
I mean, you can imagine a technology solution to this, which was some kind of sensor when somebody was standing by, but I don't think there's any time to get to that anytime soon. You know, that would be expense and certainly have to scope it. Erin and then Bob. Oh, sorry, Mary wants to point out that Bill took a look at that and said it was not advisable. And then Erin and Bob.
So thanks for bringing it back up, Rachel. I read Bill's explanation and it made sense, but I think part of the point there was how many of them there were and how long it would take to do all of them and that that was not feasible, given the impact. I just wonder if it's possible to pick some of the, you know, five or 10 of the busiest intersections and do it there. So not everywhere, just some of the most important ones.
Yeah. Bob?
Yeah, so let me just build off of what Erin just said. You know, in my daily walks around my neighborhood, I occasionally need to push one of those buttons. And those buttons work perfectly fine if you touch it with your elbow or through a glove, or you don't have to touch it with your fingers, your hand. And so maybe this is just an education component. Maybe, Jane, instead of reprogramming lights, we can just have Bill's team make up some signs. And to Erin's point, maybe we start with the most interacted crosswalks first. And I don't know if we do 10 of them or 100 of them, but maybe it's as simple as making up a sign and taping it to the pole and say, when you push the button, don't use your hand.
Use your elbow.
I know that's very low tech, but it's probably something that could be done pretty easily.
Mary?
So I was kind of thinking the same thing, Bob, because that's what I've been doing when I actually get to those lights. You can actually cross Broadway mid-block right now.
Yeah.
Because of the little traffic, just saying. And but I, you know, in terms of not doing them all, is whose sides, which ones we do, what criteria do we use? If it's just volume of people, then where, you know, is there a place where somebody needs it more, but they're just at the volume? And, you know, I just, I don't, there's just not that much traffic right now that I think warrants this. I think you could even just cross at those lights without even using your elbow because there truly is so little traffic. So I think it's a nice idea, but I think in all practicality, there are much bigger things that we can be doing and putting effort and time into, like the 20 is plenty.
Yep. Mark?
Yeah, I agree with Rachel on the health benefits of doing this, but I'm very, very reluctant to burden and overburdened staff and workers with another task. I think the incremental benefits are just not worth the amount of work that would be required to achieve it. And I found Bill's memo to be fairly persuasive on that point.
Great. And then here I've got Junie. Also, with all said, I'm worried that we may be incentivizing community members to go out there, but I understand sometimes people may need to go to the grocery store. So just by the sense of council, I'm going to assume that we're not moving forward with this one. It doesn't seem to have a majority who are interested in it. So I think with that, do we have any more ideas that we want to talk about for additional programs for COVID response? I just want to emphasize for anyone still listening at 10:47, that we have done a whole lot for COVID response, including shutting down the university schools, shutting down bars and restaurants, and we have a stay-at-home order in place. There's a person, I don't have his first name, named Murray, who's been one of the authorities on the COVID response. And those are the four things that he has listed that are the most effective to do. And the only remaining question is, is our stay-at-home order effective enough or not? But I just want to say that I think we have taken, as far as health and safety go, the best practices responses as a community and as a state. And so I think we can all be proud that we have done this pretty early in the development of this scourge in our community. So there is that. We can still continue to try and do better, and I think we should, but we've got a good start and appreciate all staff's work in getting us here. Opening the East Boulder Community Center was hard to get done. It has apparently been done very well. Mary spoke to me about it and said she had a great time. So Mary, or not a great time, but she was impressed with what she saw there. So I think our community has been responding very well. Mary?
I, you know, I just want to give kudos to Kurt Staff and everybody that has worked on that CRC, because it is, it's phenomenal. It just, it blew me away, just down to the nth detail, how much thought has been put into it and the execution is impeccable and the way that the community has come forward to volunteer and all the staff members that are, it's just, it blew me away. And I just, you know, if there are ever any thoughts about, I mean, I just think this project is something that is likely something that's award-winning because it is just so incredibly thoughtful.
Erin, you don't have a comment now, it sounds like, okay? So we had two more buckets that Bob and I come up with just as ways to organize a discussion. I think we're done with them, but one is city finances. Does anyone feel like we need to have more conversation around city finances for COVID response tonight? Okay, I don't see anything or hear anything. And then the last was economic recovery. I think we also touched on that with the CARES Act and several other things. One thing I didn't say earlier was because of the disaster declaration over the weekend, the national disaster declaration for Colorado, we're eligible for FEMA funding as well. So there's a bucket that we're going to have to be thinking about there as well. Anybody else have anything on economic recovery? Okay, seeing none, I will say that we are done with that agenda item and good work, everyone. I thought that was a pretty thorough conversation. Then the next question is, do we have it in us to finish out the board and commission appointments?
No.
Okay.
We've been at it now for five and a half hours. I don't think our thinking is going to be particularly crisp.
We need to take you back to the early days of 2014. And so Mary has a suggestion, and I would be willing to move forward with this. She suggests that we do Transportation Advisory Board. I kind of agree with that. As I looked over my list, that was the one that I was kind of regretting we didn't get to. So if we do TAB tonight and call it good, we can come back to the rest later. Erin and Mirby, do you have one more in you? Okay, I'm going to take no screaming as a yes. Let's go to TAB and see if we can get TAB done. Okay, so who would like to lead off? We have two seats and if staff can bring it up, that would be great. Wow, look at that. You guys are so on top of it. So we have two seats available. We have a two-year and a five-year, and so let's get going. Who would like to make a nomination? Okay, we have Lauren Lambert, we have Brian Dolan. We have David Mardis, we have Brent Halsey. I'm going to throw out Robert Hutchinson. Okay, let me get my notes going here. So Mirby, you nominated Brian. Why don't you start with him?
Yeah, so I think a lot of people got to know Brian because he ran for council. He's basically a native to the town, so he's seen it change over the years. I think he's understanding of the fact that there's family members who, that families exist in Boulder as well as people who have other ways of transportation. So understanding that we need a holistic approach rather than just a one-sided approach is going to be a huge benefit. And having some of the history, I think, with how our town operates is a huge plus. Having, being a father of a young child, I think, understanding the safety that concerns that face our pedestrians and our bikers is going to be a really important point that he will bring to the table. So I just think that he has really gotten involved and shown a lot of willingness to give back to the community, still being a younger person himself and working and, you know, he's, I'm sorry, I'm pretty tired at this point, so I'm not being less clear, but I just think he's going to be a really big asset to TAB at this point with his experience and what he does in his daily life, so.
Very good. And then Bob, Lauren?
Sure, I'll speak to both Lauren personally and also her role. Her role is, she's, I think, community affairs for Google, and Google, of course, is one of our largest employers and is growing. And I think it's important for our large employers to be part of the solution of some of the problems that are created by virtue of the fact they have a lot of employees. Google's already piloted some constructive solutions that I think are probably scalable and could be done by some of our other large employers. And so I'd like to have Lauren bring those solutions to the table. I'd also like to have Google engaged in another solutions that haven't occurred to them. So I think she wears that hat. And then secondly, Lauren's just a delightful person. She's a very great communicator. She used to work for Governor Hickenlooper. She understands the ins and outs of government, and I think that she will be a smart and engaged person on our Transportation Advisory Board, both in her personal capacity and as a representative of Google.
Very good. Thank you, Bob. And Mary, Dave Mardis?
So Dave, I just love his transportation omnivore comment, but he's applied several times before. I think he would be the perfect replacement for Johnny Drauzdick, who represented a person, well, he lived out in Gunbarrow, so he kind of came from the perspective of someone who has to drive sometimes. And I think we need that perspective on this board. It's a very necessary perspective. And he talked about the jobs-housing balance, so he's aware of how commuters impact our transportation and would like to address that. And he also talked about, you know, using carrots with sticks. And I think, you know, we always encourage people to apply again, and he's, I think this is about his third or fourth time that he's applied to the Transportation Advisory Board, and I think he would fill a needed perspective on that board.
Rachel?
I am nominating Brent Halsey. He comes sort of the opposite of the car perspective from the pedestrian advisory board background. He does do some driving, but bikes mostly. He sounded like a very well-rounded candidate, but recognized sort of the urgency of transportation solutions and our need to innovate. He also talked about things like parking fees and needing to shift the balance away from cars and taking some bold steps and having political courage, which I think is critical. We do need visionary leadership on transportation who have the courage to act. So I strongly support Brent and am proud to nominate him.
Great. Mark did Robert Hutchinson as well. Go ahead, Mark. Mark Waller?
Yeah, I'm here. You know, Robert Hutchinson has worked with the Department of Energy. He's a Stanford MBA. He's had a lot of experience with Rocky Mountain Institute and at Rocky Mountain Institute, he ran the mobility team. He's got a good business background. I think he's going to be very knowledgeable and practical about forward-looking transportation solutions. I'm very happy to nominate him.
Okay, and we'll do the last one and then we have some clarification. Steven Hedel from Junie Joseph.
Yes, I just wanted to say, I really think, when I was sitting there listening to all the interviews, I thought all the candidates were amazing. I think Brian Dolan is really great and I think he's just great in the way he answered a lot of the questions. And also Lauren Lambert, I thought was really good in the way she answered her question. But the person I nominate today, Steven, because I felt that as someone who believe in big ideas, I'm a person of big ideas, I appreciate the fact that Steven, a lot of his answers were very localized. They were very specific to communities, and I think that's what we need. We need people who consider the community and see how we can do transportation better. And he also mentioned free transit, and I think that's important because we, on council, we talk a lot about equity. And I think free transport, free transit is also plays an important role in making transportation a lot more equitable to all community members. And he also mentioned engineering as a solution. So he's really, really thinking hard about the solutions to transportation. So I think he would be a great addition to the board.
Very good. And just to be clear, the slide is missing one seat. So there is one seat for a five-year term, and then there is one seat available for a two-year term. So we'll be appointing two folks tonight. And so I... And so I think the way that we're going to want to do this is start with the five-year term. We have six nominees. And before we get going, does anyone want to speak who has not already spoken about one of the candidates? Okay, I'm going to weigh in real quick. I think Robert Hutchinson is an unbelievable find and that he's willing to do work for our transportation advisory board is amazing. His breadth of experience working in dozens of different cities to look at and work on their transportation problems and come up with novel solutions is, I think, really important. And I think he, you know, he has no axe to grind in any sense of the word. He is really just all about how do we reduce carbon emissions in the transportation sector as fast as we can and increase mobility. So that's my thought. So let's begin. How are we doing this, Lynette?
Well, you've been kind of doing them all together so we could start from the bottom, if you'd like.
Yep, that would be great. And I guess it doesn't matter, we've been doing them all together. That's right, I'm still stuck in the old days. So everyone write in who you would like for the five-year term. Yeah, five-year term first, Adam. So I have, let's make sure I count this right, one, two, three, four for Lambert. I have two for Robert, and I'm going to add mine to that, so that's three. And then I have one for David Mardis. And Rachel must be another Lambert. Let's see, Lauren, Lambert, Lauren, four. Help me, folks, I count four for Lambert, is that correct? I count three for Hutch, one for David, which doesn't add up. Oh, Junie, there you go. Okay, so the way I see this, no one gets the vote. And so it's down to Lauren Lambert and Robert Hutchinson in a runoff. Is that right, Lynette?
That's correct.
Okay, so between Lauren Lambert and Robert Hutchinson for the five-year term, write your votes in, please. So Mirby, I see a yes from you. Is that a yes, that was correct, I assume? Okay. So we've got Lauren is one, two, three, four. See, four for Lauren again. And then Robert, Robert, Robert. So I see four for Hutch. And I'm missing one. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Yeah, somebody hasn't voted yet.
That's me.
And okay, well, you can pick between Lauren or Robert Hutchinson. Lauren Lambert or Robert Hutchinson?
Okay.
Lauren, okay, Lauren it is, so Lauren gets a five-year term. And then I would assume, well, let's open it up. So I think the way we do this is we open it up again and we vote for who do we put into the two-year term? Everybody's available except for Lauren to vote for. So let's vote, who would we like to see for the two-year term? Okay. And then where do I start here? So she said Lauren, Robert, Robert, Robert. I see three Roberts.
Four Roberts.
Mark, okay, there's a fourth. Okay, and then I'll be the fifth for Robert. So there we go. Robert Hutchinson gets the two-year term. So we've appointed Lauren Lambert and Robert Hutchinson to the transportation advisory board. And I agree, this was an incredibly, incredibly rich board of applicants as well. So that was another board where we have tons of expertise and great applicants. So thank you all.
I move that we ratify that appointment.
Somebody seconds that? Great. And so if there are any opposed, speak up now. No opposed, so that's ratified. So that is good to go.
Who was the second?
Who, I don't remember who was the second, Junie, I think.
No, Mary.
Mary was, okay, Mary. Okay, so as I look over the boards we have left, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, we have 10 boards left. And I assure you, they will go much faster than tonight's did because there are a lot less applicants for them. So we will postpone that and do that sometime. Our last issue tonight is a discussion of future council meeting, study session schedules and open comment frequency. And so what this is, is just to make sure that we're good with converting all of our April meetings to regular or emergency meetings. And so I think basically this is just, are we good with what we just had at the work plan discussions? So if anybody's got any question about that, the follow-on question is the frequency of open comment. CAC's suggestion was we do open comment at the first and third meeting of every month as usual. And then the special meetings, we don't take open comment. So. Any objection to that CAC suggestion? All right, seeing none. Any debrief or other comments? All right, well, I apologize we didn't get out by 10, but thank you all for what I think is a very, very good meeting. In difficult circumstances, we got a lot done. And so thank you all very much. Have a good night, everyone. The meeting is adjourned.
Live from Paris off Podbankat.
That inadequate safety measures could be countering their efforts to stem the disease. And it's dampening once again hopes that the coronavirus outbreak in Spain had reached its peak.